Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, March 2, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Before asking anyone recording to identify themselves, I am just going to announce that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, the Board of Selectmen members who will be participating remotely this evening are myself, Mary Power, the Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. At this point, if there is anyone who is recording this meeting besides our friends at Harbor Media, could you please raise your hand and identify yourself? Hey, seeing none, I would also just point out for the benefit of those that are on the call this evening that thanks to our partners at Harbor Media, this meeting is actually being broadcast live. So we appreciate Harbor's media support on that. The first item of business on our agenda, we had minutes scheduled for approval. Bill, I think both Joe and I were hoping that we could defer the vote on those minutes until Thursday, if that's all right with you.
Oh, problem at all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item of business on our agenda is the FY22 capital outlay recommendations. And we are joined this evening by the Chair of the Capital Outlay Committee, Eric Valentine. I believe we may also be joined by other members of the committee. Eric, when I turn it over to you, if perhaps you could just start by naming the members of your committee, I think maybe some may be on the line, but we certainly want to recognize all of the members of your committee. And then at that point, we'll turn it over to you to walk the board through the committee's recommendations. And Eric, if when you start, if you could please introduce yourself and give your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Valentine. I'm the Chair of the Committee, and my address is 9 Hawthorne Road. So other members of the Committee are Matt Goulet and Kevin Flaherty. We also have two AdCom representatives, Libby Claypool and Devlin Cooper. Last but not least, we have Gene Montgomery, who's the Town Treasurer, ex officio non-voting member, to round out the committee. So I figured I'd start with a kind of a high-level review of the Capital Outlay Committee's annual review process, how we determine what to fund, and then provide some high-level metrics specifically to fiscal '22, and then I can field any questions, and we can go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay, so each year, we receive all the capital requests from the various departments. We will meet with each department to discuss their capital requests in detail, to understand the nature of the need, the priority, as well as the basis of the request. We use a pre-established criteria to assign a priority to each item, and we try and fund all annual and priority-one requests each year. We also consider the specific department's prioritization of their requests, as well as any impacts to deferring items to out-years, as we don't want to defer too many items to one year for a given department, which require a burden to fund in the future. Specific to fiscal '22, we received 4.8 million of capital requests to be funded from the tax levy, and we reduced that to 2.6 million recommended funding from the tax levy. Of that 2.6 million, approximately 800K was annual requests, and 1.8 million were deemed priority-one requests. Specific to the school department, we received 2.2 million of capital requests for fiscal '22, and recommending funding 1 million, or approximately 1 million of the requests. From an overall funding perspective, we're recommending approximately 2.6 million to be funded from the tax levy, approximately 40,000 from the municipal waterways fund for the Harbor Masters requests, and a little over 3.3 million to be funded from user rates and fees for the country club, the rec. department, the sewer department, and the water company's And then I think that's the high-level items. I don't know if there's any questions at this point.
No, I think, Eric, maybe what you could do, and I would just mention that we've received a report from the Capital Outlay Committee that Tom or Michelle, I'd ask that that be posted on the town website so that interested members of the public can see the committee's great work. Eric, perhaps, in this document that you've sent us, there are different categories, different departments, and maybe just hit some headlines of some of the requests that the committee is considering, recommending. If you could maybe do that, that would, I think, be a helpful way to go through this.
Sure. So some of the, I guess, higher-dollar amount items being requested that we're recommending funding for are for the IT department, they're requesting a new storage area network, a SAN replacement or upgrade for the town for $125,000. There's additional needs with everything moving online, as well as all the virtual stuff, so we thought that was a priority-one item for this year. There is the fire department's ambulance replacement for $404,000, which we had deferred last year, but are recommending funding this year as a priority-one item. As the ambulance that is in reserve that would be replacing is at the end of its useful life. Let's see, we're recommending $99,000 for a new backhoe at the transfer station. And let's see, what else? I think those are the heavy hitters. Oh, as well as, it's an annual item for the school system, $265,000 for baseline technology, which includes approximately $90,000 for the Google Chromebooks for the middle school. And, oh no, sorry, that was, I misspoke, $265,000 doesn't include the Chromebooks. The other technology requests that were, annual technology requests that were funded is for $166,000 for major infrastructure and Chromebook replacements. And then lastly, we're recommending funding $105,000 to the school so that they can purchase three school buses off of the expiring lease this year to have as reserve or additional capacity or backups.
Yeah. Eric, before opening up to my colleagues for questions, the fire department ambulance, I think you referenced this, but I'm remembering last year that that item was deferred, and we were a little nervous about that because of the miles that are put on our ambulances and the extent to which they run, and frankly, the revenue they bring into the town. Is this, again, is this the one that we put off from last year?
It is, yep.
Okay. Okay. And then my understanding is that the vehicle currently in service will then become the backup?
Yeah, the active ambulance will become the backup, and the reserve, it looks like Steve's on the line, I'm not sure if it'll be disposed of or if it'll be kept as an additional reserve reserve.
Sure. Chief Murphy, thank you for joining us. Could you maybe respond to the question?
Yes, so the last time we purchased an ambulance, we kept what was the surplus vehicle, so now we have two reserve ambulances. This time, we will be trading this one in, the oldest one in the fleet, or selling it outright. We haven't actually really negotiated that with the vendor that we'll be purchasing him for. So this will still allow us to have two as primaries and then two as reserves.
And Chief, while we have you on the line, could you just speak to the importance of having those ambulances as reserve?
Yeah, so we use them for two different things. One is that if there are times that we have more than two calls going on at once, then we will put out a callback, which means that we will put a page out to see if we can get anyone additional that can come back in, and then we will staff that, one of the reserve ambulances. We also will do that at special events, like town meeting or anything, that we will staff that as an extra vehicle. We used to do it for the fireworks, all that type of thing. So that's one reason for it. The other reason is for maintenance and mechanical work. A lot of times, because these things are very computerized, the electronics and everything else for the vehicle itself, we can only do so much of the maintenance work in-house, so we have to send it out, and at times, it may be out of service for two or three weeks. And we have had occasions beforehand. It hasn't happened since we've had the two reserves, but there had been times in the past when we only had one reserve, that we had to borrow a vehicle from another town because both of our two ambulances were being worked on at the same time. So since we upgraded, not upgraded, but since we kept the last one and didn't trade it in, we haven't had to do that. But there are times that we may have both of the reserves having mechanical work done at the same time.
Thank you. Joe, questions for Eric with respect to the capital recommendations from the committee?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. So I am looking at the spreadsheet, and Mary, just correct me if I'm wrong, is the five-year capital plan that we're looking at?
Yes.
So the amounts that are for the out-years, fiscal years '23, '24 through '26, are those items that have currently been requested or that are projected by the committee based on experience?
They're provided by each department of their anticipated or projected capital needs in those years. We focus on the current fiscal year, fiscal '22 in this case, that we were actually funding. We try and make the out-years as accurate as possible, but they are subject and often do change.
So the items that are shown for the out-years, do they reflect the committee's current thinking and recommendations, or you're just going to revisit them in subsequent years?
Well, it's hard to say if it's our current recommendations, because just from the tax levy, it's significantly over our annual budget, as well as there are items that will likely require a warrant article. There's roughly 2.3 million for a new boiler at the high school in fiscal '24. There's a couple of fire engines in there, there are 600, 700K that would likely require a warrant or some other funding source. So it's the committee's best projection based on the inputs and discussions from the departments. But I wouldn't say we're, I think it's hard to say that we're formally recommending them currently without ironing out the actual funding sources.
Thank you. I was wondering to what extent they reflected a deferment of expenditure. So for example, if a department had made a request for this year, is it the case that, well, you think it's not that urgent, so you put it off for another year or two years?
So when, yeah, for the current fiscal year, when we're not able to fund all of the department's requests, we will just push it into the next fiscal year.
Yep. And do we have, I'm assuming the spreadsheet is your current recommendation, do we have what was requested by the various departments?
I can provide that.
That would be helpful, just so to give at least me a basis of comparison of to what extent requests are being fulfilled.
Sure.
And do you have a published list or sort of identified list of criteria that you follow that allows the committee to say, request A will be fully funded, request B will only be partially, and request C will not at all?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if it's published, but we do have a listing of the criteria that we review each request against, and we can definitely provide that as well.
Yep. No, I mean, I think you've identified the critical items here, and I see that you have on your list items that are not necessarily being funded, at least directly by the town. So you've got the $4.2 million of the windows for the Plymouth River Elementary School, and that's over and above the dollar amounts that you mentioned in terms of being funded for the schools.
Correct, yep. And so, yeah, we like to include the current year warrant article capital items so that it provides a full view of the capital expenditures or capital budget items to the readers.
Great, thank you. Great job, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Eric, before I toss it over to Bill Ramsey, just a question. You mentioned at the beginning that in FY22, the requests totaled 4.8 million, you're recommending 2.6. Did the balance of those requests get applied in future years? So in other words, are they part of like '23, '24?
They would be part of '23.
Okay.
So when we defer something, we just push it out to the next year.
Gotcha, thank you. Bill, questions on the capital outlay recommendation?
Eric, thank you to you and your committee for the work you did in preparing this report. My only question was kind of along the same lines as Joe's question. How do you determine the levels of priority? Do those come from the department heads, or does your committee assign the priority levels?
It's both. So each department will provide their prioritized requests. So they had six requests, they'll say, okay, this is our number-one request, our number-two request, to give us an idea of how they view it. And then we will review their requests against our criteria, which is the risk of increased safety issues or decreased safety issues, whether the item is broken or it's a core to the department's mission, and not having it would inhibit or prohibit them from carrying out that mission.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the recommendations from the Capital Outlay Committee? Okay, Eric, just to wrap up, first and most importantly, many thanks to you, all the members of your committee, and the support you provided from Gene Montgomery. The Capital Outlay Committee has been meeting in earnest since, I think you started in December?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah. To review all these recommendations, giving careful consideration to all departmental requests, both as Eric's described, priorities of the department, as well as criteria established by the committee. And given the fact that the requests typically exceed the amount of available funds, not an easy job to do. As has been our custom with the close to 50 budgets that we've reviewed since our budget season started, we are not taking any votes this evening. Once our forecast has been pretty much finalized, and we understand how much available revenue there is, the board will be taking votes on operating budgets and capital outlay. I would also just reference that right now in the forecast, the town administrator is recommending the potential for an additional half a million dollars in capital outlay, depending on the available revenue. And Eric, for you and the Capital Outlay Committee, if it appears that the town may be going forward with that in some fashion, and really, I think that if we were, it would be if an override were being advanced, we would look to the Capital Outlay Committee to make specific project recommendations for a specific funding amount. I think we're probably about a week or two away from knowing if that's the direction that we're heading, but certainly, as we do with all of the capital, we will rely on your committee's recommendation as to projects to be funded should additional funding become available. So a little bit different this year, but we appreciate the committee's work. I know sometimes in years past, we've had to come back to you and say, hey, if we have to cut something, what would be cut? My hope is we don't have to do that this year.
Sounds good, yeah. That's wonderful news, and yeah, definitely a nice change from prior years, as we were anticipating the request for a listing of prioritized cuts, so we had that in our back pocket just in case, but the reverse scenario is definitely better and well-received.
Yeah, well, and fingers crossed we won't ask you for that other list, so you never know what's going to happen. But I think the five-year look and understanding, to Joe's point, the levy-funded requests in the out-years is demonstrating that the current amount of money that we are allocating to capital just doesn't appear to be sufficient to keep up with the town-wide capital needs. And to the extent that we do go forward with that, I think a lot of the committee's work and understanding of capital will go a long way towards building value to increase the budget. So again, Tom and Gene will be in touch with you as to how those next steps will materialize, and it'll probably be within the next week or two.
Sounds good. Yeah, I mean, as we've said in past years, we feel the 100K increase each year is great, but the backlog seems to be increasing each year, and additional funding for capital wouldn't go to waste, and I think I can speak for the committee that it's necessary. In reviewing just the backlog, looking at the out-years, like the four out-years of our past five-year plans, in fiscal '19, that four-year period backlog was a little under 15 million, and fiscal '22, it's increased to 25 million. Granted, that includes some of those likely warrant article items that I mentioned earlier, but it just demonstrates that the capital needs backlog is increasing, and something needs to be done about it. In addition, we've been getting capital requests from, I guess, your non-typical departments. Seems like more and more, we had a couple this year with the GAR Hall request and the Tree and Park Barn painting and repairs request. And so additional funding would go a long way to help fund unforeseen and new requests.
Yeah, and Eric, I think another thing that we may want to do in what I call the off-season, which is kind of after town meetings and the elections have passed, we had some Harvard students who did really a wonderful benchmarking analysis on capital. And I know that members of your committee were involved in being interviewed for some of that study. I think one of the things we might want to look at, sort of, as I said in the off-season, is to what extent might the town want to consider financing more of our capital with debt? And right now, as you've pointed out, we have warrant articles, and we tend to fund things like the Plymouth River windows with debt. We have a lot of cash capital items, some of our technology doesn't have as long a useful life. And if you look at some of these items, particularly in the out-years where it's 200,000, 300,000, I think in other communities, they have thresholds of financing things with debt. Sometimes the threshold is like $100,000. And I think that might also be helpful as we look at how to manage the town's capital requests, because many of these assets have a long useful life. And to the extent that the town can leverage its AAA rating, and that may, again, allow us to move some things out of the backlog. So I think there's also a combination of maybe looking at how we finance these, that from time to time, we should look at how we do it and see if maybe we want to make any changes.
Sounds good, yeah. One of the ideas we had thrown out there was, periodically, I don't know what the timeframe would be, but you have one big warrant article where you fund some of these big-ticket capital items through debt. So definitely welcome the involvement of looking into new or different ways of funding future capital items.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, well, Eric, thank you, and thank you to the members of the committee. I think Libby's here and Matt is here, and Gene, so thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time, and I'd like to thank my fellow committee members for their time and diligence, as well as the support from all the departments, in case they're on here, because they're all great to work with and very supportive in our inquiries and our follow-up questions and requests, so much appreciated.
Thank you, Eric. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Next, the board is actually going to be taking up three different warrant articles. The first warrant article we're starting with is Article R, which is an article that seeks to amend Article 39 of the general bylaws, and specifically to update the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust reporting requirements. We're joined this evening by Emily Wentworth and by Tim White, who is the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. Emily and Tim, I'm going to turn this over to you.
I'm going to, in turn, turn it over to Tim.
Hi, folks.
You're it, Tim.
Tim White, 35 Kimmel Beach Road. So we are asking you folks to consider supporting the article to change our financial reporting to the town. Brief history, the trust was created back in 2007 by vote of the town. In the original bylaw, there was no specific reporting mechanism for us to report our finances to the town. Well, obviously, even back in 2007, our records were public records and available for anybody to review, but historically, I have always, I guess, certainly for the last 10 years, have been appearing before the board and before advisory, and typically before CPC, and giving a presentation not only of what we've done substantively, but typically I'll bring along our treasurer to report on our finances. I think it was 2013, it may have been '12, that advisory approached us on the trust and asked whether or not we'd be willing to support a change, in addition to the article, to have a reporting mechanism implemented. And so we worked with advisory and came up with the bylaw, and that is the bylaw that is in existence today regarding the mechanism. The one thing we put into it that we probably shouldn't have was that we indicated that the body we would report to would be town meeting, as opposed to the Board of Selectmen or advisory for that matter. And we all attend town meeting, it's not exactly the right time to have a detailed financial analysis of any committee in the town, and in fact, no other committee does that. Committees report to the Board of Selectmen. So that's what we're suggesting that we make the change, is to change the reporting body for our financial disclosures to the Board of Selectmen, as opposed to town meeting. The timing, I think, is terrific, because we now have, for the first time, some professional support. The timing, I think, is terrific, because we now have, for the first time, some professional support from the town. Mike Silvery's come on board and is working with our volunteer treasurer, Anita Comeford, to put together a good spreadsheet that will, you know, thoroughly identify receipts, expenses, et cetera, et cetera. So, it just, it makes sense to make our trust, our committee, consistent with everybody else. And the right timing is now with the additional support we're going to get from Mike. Regardless, we're going to be giving the same report, although it would likely be able to be more detailed with a meeting with the Board of Selectmen or advisory as opposed to town meeting, because town meeting has so many things on its plate. We still do our annual report like everybody else. I got the reminder from Sharon recently to get ours put together, and I'll get that in the next few days. But it just, it makes sense, it's more practical, and it's no less transparent, so we'd ask you to support it.
Great, thank you, Tim. I think I'm going to start with Bill Ramsey, since Bill is the liaison to affordable housing. Now, questions on Article R?
I don't really have a specific question, but I do want to speak in support of the recommendation. I am the liaison to the trust. I attend the monthly meetings. And, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been relying on Anita to do this work. And she has gone above and beyond with the time and hours she's put into it. I know Amy helped a lot this year as well. But when the trust applies for funding, like CPC funding and other grants, there are a lot of questions asked about what, you know, what are the finances, how is the money used? This is going to just provide the trust with some very needed assistance and help. I think it's going to streamline the process and just create more transparency. And Tim and other trust members can focus more on their mission of looking for opportunities for affordable housing. So, I can't support this initiative any more than what Tim said, but I think it's a good move forward.
Thank you. Joe, questions or comments on Article R?
Tim, good to see you.
Nice to see you, Drew.
I was in Bill's shoes last year as liaison, and I appreciate all the hard work. I think the fact that the Board of Selectmen meet on a regular basis and town meeting meets once a year makes it all the more reason that your article, your proposal, makes sense, given, you know, there may be issues of timing and maybe we need a special session devoted specifically to issues raised in your report. Can't do any of that at town meeting. So, I think a lot of wisdom in your suggestion. Thank you. I fully support it.
Tim, I just echo my colleague's sentiments all the way around. I'm glad this is coming forward. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment on Article R? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll move to recommend favorable action of Article R.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Tim. And Tim and Emily, I believe that our next article, Article AA, is also one that you will be walking us through? Is that Tim again, or is that Emily?
We're trading places on this one. So, I'll just provide a quick overview of the request and describe the property. Tim is obviously still on the call, so he can talk a little bit about, you know, what an incredible opportunity this would be for the trust. And I believe Susan Murphy is also on the call, Special Real Estate Counsel, so she's available to answer any questions you might have about the title work that we've done to date on the property and then what a traditional disposition process might look like if the board wants to consider other options. So, as noted in the Warren article, and it looks like I have the ability to screen share, if you can give me a moment. The property itself is tucked into a neighborhood on Rockwood Road that runs between East Street and 3A. If you can see where I am. So, it consists of approximately 25,833 square feet of land. It was laid out in 1954, and at that time complied or exceeded minimum lot area standards. And it continues to meet present lot area requirements. And, but in 1954, it was laid out with just 100 feet of frontage. That requirement changed the following year. In 1955, it was increased to 125 feet. So, it's pre-existing non-conforming with respect to its frontage. However, the lot appears to remain buildable, or what's commonly referred to as grandfathered, under a combination of local zoning exemptions that once existed in the Hingham zoning bylaw and were in effect through the mid-1960s. And then thereafter, under certain protections in the State Zoning Act, 40A, Section 6 specifically. So, the state statute, in particular, protects non-conforming lots that complied with requirements in effect when the lots were laid out, have remained vacant, and meet kind of minimum dimensional standards, provided that that lot has always been separately owned. Special Real Estate Counsel and I have reviewed the property, the deeds for this particular parcel, as well as adjoining parcels. And it appears that the property would comply under the state exemptions as buildable. So, the town, as background, acquired the property through a tax taking in 1999. The Housing Trust periodically reviews tax title properties to assess whether they have any value for affordable housing development. And members have reviewed this particular property on a number of occasions over the past few months and opted to propose this article, which would authorize but not require the selectmen to transfer the property to the trust in the future for affordable housing purposes. The trust really rarely has an opportunity to very economically develop housing. Their past three acquisitions cost, on average, $380,000. And this would give them the opportunity to, you know, just do things in a way that is not as expensive as they normally are required to do things. So, if town meeting were to authorize a potential transfer, the trust would then undertake some site investigations. The lot doesn't appear to be impacted by wetlands or significant amounts of floodplain, but there would have to be some soil testing to make sure that wastewater can be treated on site. It appears under our local regulations that a two-bedroom house could be built without any relief under the Board Health regs. And the site could potentially serve for more family housing, a three- or four-bedroom home, if the trust were to undertake a comprehensive permit application process, so they could get relief or waiver from that standard. There would be ample opportunity before this board were asked to actually act, if town meeting authorized it to do so, for a neighborhood-level conversation. The trust routinely, you know, reaches out to abutters to talk about their plans. And obviously, if it were to come back to this board, there would be another opportunity for public comment. I would just note that the trust reaffirmed at its last meeting that it would gladly accept the property, whether or not it's definitively verified that it is grandfathered or can be built upon by right, because, again, they do have the option always to seek relief from any local standards through a comprehensive permit application. And then finally, I would note, and you have in your packets, a notification that there was a minor typo in the warrant language. So, the 1954 subdivision plan is referenced, but the recording information is missing a digit. It should be page 811 and not just 11.
Okay, I have a question that I'm not sure who is best to sort of respond to this, whether it's Town Administrator, Emily, or Counsel. About a year ago, my predecessor, Karen Johnson, was contacted by a resident, who actually is an abutter to Rockwood Road, inquiring about the possibility of purchasing this parcel from the town. And in the transition from, you know, Karen to me, that resident had asked questions from time to time. And, you know, we had let the resident know that we had to do some, you know, some of the due diligence, Emily, that you've described. But I think, first of all, we ought to note that some of the way this became, kind of got on the radar screen was because a resident kind of, you know, a resident inquired. And I just wondered if somebody on the call could please speak to how sort of the chain of events and the town process that, you know, started with an inquiry from a resident and now is leading to a Warren article in which, you know, the town is sort of repurposing that. So, Tom, who is the best person to speak to that?
I'm mute myself, sorry. I can speak to it a little bit. I think you're absolutely right, Mary. In some ways, when we get these, when we get inquiries about town-owned properties and if, often, it's abutters, but if private landowners would like to purchase town-owned property, that triggers a review oftentimes by towns to, or by the town to look into whether or not there's a municipal use for that property before it can be considered for sale. And oftentimes, that review would result in transfer of property to the Conservation Commission. In this instance, it's the Housing Trust that has an interest in the property. So, I think that that process occurred in large part after the resident had inquired about the purchase of the town-owned property. But Emily, if I'm missing anything there, you want to add any color, feel free.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair summary of where things ended. While we were reviewing the property to see whether it could be disposed of as land of low value or if, in fact, it is grandfathered, if it would be disposed of through a more intensive process or public process, because it is worth something. We noted that there were potential public purposes that could be advanced. So, it does actually happen to back up to conservation land. You can see that highlighted in green in this image. So, there might be an opportunity if the town would like to kind of leverage this resource for public purposes to do a joint conservation housing type of project, whether that's just a small easement, so folks from the neighborhood can get back to open space or what remains to be seen. I think there's lots of possibilities.
And just one question. To the extent that the town's review had determined that the town did not have an alternate purpose for this particular parcel, what's the process by which then, you know, let's say the town would have decided that we were interested in selling the parcel? How does that work with kind of procurement laws? And again, I'm not sure who this question's best directed to, Emily, if it's you or Tom or Susan.
I think Susan is here, Special Counsel, Susan Murphy is here, so maybe she can answer.
Hi, thank you. This is Susan Murphy. The property is currently owned by the town. It doesn't appear to meet the criteria for a parcel of low value. I haven't spoken to Jean Montgomery about this directly. I've been more involved in looking at the title and land use. But typically, once a town owns a parcel of land, and if it doesn't qualify as a parcel of low value, it would have to go through a full disposition process under Chapter 30D for disposition of real estate, which involves soliciting bids, et cetera. So, the town can, as a general rule, the town cannot just, as any private person could do, or company can't just sell land to anyone who might express interest. There is a public procurement process that's required.
Okay, thank you. Before opening it up to the public, Joe, questions with respect to Article AA?
I do. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Am I correct that the lot is currently a vacant lot? Is there any other structures on the building, on the lot now?
No, it's unimproved. It's always been vacant.
Okay. And it has the property, is it considered an abandoned property?
So, people were not paying their taxes, so it was taken for a tax title. I don't, I'm not certain what you mean by abandoned, otherwise.
Well, I mean, the issue, so, a lot that is abandoned, my understanding is it loses its grandfathered status.
Oh, yeah, that usually is referring to abandoned structures versus the property itself. There's different standards that apply to vacant land.
So, the tax title issue would not cause an abandonment from a land perspective?
No.
And this is, I'm not sure who this question would be for, would be addressed. Do we need to amend the article to correct that page number issue that was pointed out?
I would say we don't need to amend the article. We can fix that in the recommended motion.
Okay, great. And what would be the process for consulting with neighbors, abutters, if we proceeded with this? In terms of whatever project is being considered?
So, what the trust has been doing routinely is doing noticed public meetings for abutters. And they use the same standards, you know, under zoning. They reach out to everybody within 300 feet and invite them to have a discussion, even in very, you know, even at a very conceptual level. So, before they've finalized plans, to make them aware of what they're going to be doing. They then, as the plans are developed, there are additional opportunities, either through a permitting process or, you know, a discussion with the selectmen if the land were to be transferred to the trust to continue that conversation.
And just looking at the map, it's the yellow, it's the parcel that's in dark yellow that's at issue. And it's abutting a green property. What is that green area?
That's owned by the Conservation Commission, so that's public land as well.
So, is there now common ownership of abutting land that would get rid of the grandfathering if it's owned by the town?
No, I don't believe so. So, even though it's two different aspects of the town, there's nothing about merger of those two properties that would make 32 Rockwood Road any more conforming, right? Its deficiency is not lot area, it's frontage. And that green space doesn't benefit the frontage issue.
Got it. So, merger would...
And Joe, I could add to that as well, if that would be okay. The other, and I agree with Emily's analysis, but also with respect to merger, there is the concept of separate identity. And that backland was acquired is under care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission, whereas this land has never been under care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate your answers.
Bill? Well, Bill, you're muted.
Thank you. Emily, did I hear you correctly that the land acquired, that the town acquired the land because of tax delinquencies?
Yep, that's correct, in 1999.
In 1999, okay. So, I guess my question probably is to Susan. Susan, can the previous owner cure the delinquencies? Or does this time run out for that to happen?
Hi, Bill. Well, so, I'll just do a little bit of a caveat asterix on foreclosure.
Well, so I'll just do a little bit of a caveat asterisk, that foreclosure of tax liens is not my area of expertise, the town has other council that manages that for the town. However, the town did get a final judgment in the tax lien case, and it was recorded in 2003, where all rights of redemption were forever foreclosed and barred. So no, the prior owner has no further rights in the property.
Okay, thank you. Emily and Susan, it sounds like you've done a lot of due diligence here, and it's a buildable lot, and I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'm going to open it up to members of the public for questions and comments. When recognized by the Chair, if you could please give your name and address. And may I ask, please, for this and any public questions or comments, if you could please direct your questions or comments to me as the Chair, to the extent that we need to redirect those to someone else, we'd be happy to do that. Mr. Seitow?
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Seitow, and I live at 34 Rockwood Road. And I might be the guy who's responsible for this, actually getting onto the warrant after hearing the earlier conversations, that my asking might be what brought this whole thing to light. So I am trying to find out, what defines, I have a shed, that if you pull the map, if you were to share the screen and pull the map back up, you'd see that little red dot that is a shed that when I bought the house was on the property line. And we wound up getting an easement from the town for that because it was not in conformance with what was there for current zoning when we bought the house in 2012. That little red dot that's on the property is my shed. So that's question one, is what happens to that, and that easement, and everything else that we got when we bought it? And then question two is the, I see that, now that you've zoomed in, I see that it's actually just the plot number, so thank you for the Zoom. But that's about where the shed is. And then question number two is, over the past several years, there have been a couple of incidents of trees falling from that yard onto my yard, or trees growing up and affecting the shed. So I've done some maintenance to the yard. Two trees fell, one fell on a neighbor's car, a friend's car in my driveway, causing an insurance claim. One fell on my fence, causing an insurance claim. So it just made sense to bring in a tree company to take out all the dead trees that were there. So I had that done over the past couple of years. I've tried to communicate with the town every time we were going to do something, so I hope I didn't overstep. But really, we've tried, I've tried for the past six years to figure out how to buy and merge these two lots. So that has always been my intent, is to get onto a town warrant or to a town hall meeting to have this discussion, and try and figure out, what do I do?
Okay, thank you. The first question with respect to the easement, Emily, is that you, or is that a question for Susan, or is that a question that we need to get back to Mr. Seitow on?
It would be helpful if he, sorry.
Sorry, Emily.
Yeah, no, I was just going to offer, we see some easement lines on this plan, so you can see, on 26 Rockwood, there's what appears to be an easement. I don't see something similar on 32, and Susan and I have reviewed the deeds and not found evidence of that or any building permits on the property. So we'd be happy to review anything that's available.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's documentation, it would be helpful to review. There is no recorded easement against the property, and any easement granted by the town would have had to have been approved by town meeting. So I don't recall that happened. I don't know if there's possibly a license that may have been. I don't know who would have granted it, but it would be helpful to see more information if it's available.
Okay. Mr. Seitow, did you want to just respond to that before we responded to your second question?
Yeah, is it best if we, sorry, is it best if we take this conversation offline, and I can go pull all of the docs that I had when I bought, and then just tell me, do they go to Emily, who I spoke with earlier today, or how do I interact with this board now?
My suggestion would be that I do think taking this question offline would be a good idea, and I would direct you to Emily to do that. And if there's an outstanding question about an easement, it may be best for the board to not take action on this article tonight, but just allow that due diligence to happen.
The other question as a follow-up to the easement piece would be, should I conduct a survey at this point? Like, should I go hire a surveyor to figure out exactly where the lines are? Because on my plotlines, the shed is drawn on a different plotline than what I'm looking at here. And that's what was registered with the courts, or with the town, whatever.
Sure, thank you. Emily or Susan, what guidance can you give the board and Mr. Seitow on this?
A survey would be helpful. It maybe isn't necessary just yet. We can have that conversation offline as well.
And I would say, I don't know if you, what record you have when you purchase a house. If you, when at the time you purchased a house, you had a mortgage on your property or any time financed your property, there's usually a plot plan that the lender requires get established, which will show lot lines. They don't usually come out, though, and stake the ground. But there's the recorded plan, which shows the boundaries of all the lots. But you wouldn't need to have a surveyor come out and put stakes. Usually, they just put wooden stakes in the ground with little flags off them to determine where the property lines are, if you chose to do that.
And I guess, I'll just add too, if there's discrepancies between what you already have for plans and the image that you're looking at right now, this is just from our online mapping software, so things can be off a little bit. Usually not to a great degree, but what you're seeing is not survey quality.
Okay, so let's follow up on those items to understand the status as to the location of a shed, any easement, whether any sort of next steps. If someone could respond, Mr. Seitow's second question, I think he expressed it for many years, he was interested in purchasing this parcel from the town. Who can respond best to his second question?
Mary, I'll just...
I'll call on somebody.
No, I'll answer, I'll answer. Mary, I don't know, I don't know that I have the answer to that question. I mean, I've been real estate counsel for 10 years now. I started in this role in 2011, and I don't have any record of anyone ever inquiring to me about the title to the property or the zoning of the property. So this first came to my attention in 2020. So I'm not exactly sure kind of how that communication chain went.
Okay. And could someone just, again, I think maybe if someone could just recap, but when the town gets a request like this, sort of, how did, you know, sort of, how did we get from a resident making an inquiry to, you know, again, if someone could perhaps just describe the process the town goes through when requests like this come up? That might be helpful. Then Mr. Seitow, if you have a follow-up question, I'll take that then, but could someone just walk through that process?
Yeah. I can, sorry, Joe, I'm going to give it a stab. I think between the three of us, we'll get there. So in this particular case, there, an inquiry from Mr. Seitow is forwarded to my attention to see whether the property, you know, had value, in essence. There was then communication between the Conservation Department, the Town Treasurer, and the housing folks to see if there is any value to the property before it was disposed of for public purposes. Jean Montgomery and the Treasurer's Office will periodically reach out to both Conservation and this office on tax title properties specifically. So this is something that we're kind of used to going through. And as I mentioned in the presentation, the Housing Trust also will periodically review the list and sometimes do some site exploration. I think there was property on Cedar Street where they did this most recently, to see if there is any opportunity to create housing on land that the town already owns. So that's where we ended up on this particular one. It seems the housing interests are a little bit greater, in part because the lot is appropriately sized, it appears to be grandfathered, it's in a neighborhood. So it just seems like a great opportunity for the Trust.
Okay. Emily, thank you for recapping that. Mr. Seitow, a question, and again, if you wouldn't mind directing it to me, that would be great. Yep, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you again. I have no idea what I did wrong, but I have emails and letters and copies of said that I have sent to the Board of Selectmen dating back to 2013.
Okay. And I apologize that the communication between the town and you, that the town was not as responsive to the communications as they've occurred. I apologize on behalf of the town and the board for that.
I'm not looking for an apology. If it would be helpful, so somebody said that this is the first that they're hearing of it. If it would be helpful, I can archive up, it's probably once a year, maybe every six months, that I would send something in, either to the Tax Department for Jean Montgomery, or to Irma, or Karen, or one of the predecessors of the board. I can package all of this up and send it to somebody if it would be relevant. It's more, I feel bad if people are, just as I feel bad that I'm getting caught flat-footed finding out that there is a discussion for 32, I feel bad that people have invested time and didn't know that I have been investing time as well.
Sure.
So if there's something that you think would, if there's something you would think that would be appropriate, then I'm happy to do it. And the part B, sorry, is, Mary, part B is, I think that the committee did a good job answering the, how would I buy it if it's not deemed, if it is deemed buildable and therefore it has value, how would that bidding process go through? I now have a much better understanding of that than I did.
Sure, I'm glad of that. You know, I think at this stage, I think probably what's best is for us to sort of move forward with kind of where we are right now. And I think the immediate questions that we want to make sure of is your questions with respect to easement and, you know, kind of the situation with your shed. I just think it'll be a good idea that we make sure that that's sorted out. And I think now the, you know, now we know, now you know who to contact. And Joe and Bill, I'm going to suggest that we just defer voting on this until that little bit of due diligence is done. I think it would just, you know, be best for everything. We have another meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, so hopefully that, you know, that, you know, we can find out, you know, we can sort of resolve this by then, and then the board can, you know, decide how to move forward. Does that, Bill and Joe, does that sound sensible?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments with respect to Article AA? Okay, thank you, we're going to move on. Mr. Seitow, thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for your comments. The next item of business on our agenda is Article N, Design and Construction Bidding Funds for Public Safety Facility. Tom, I'm going to turn this over to you to maybe tee this up. And then I know we are joined by members of the Public Safety Building Committee, and then perhaps you can turn it over probably to Mr. Garrity, the Chair, but perhaps you could just kind of give an overview of what's before us right now.
Sure, I'll try to do so in a way that doesn't steal Bob's thunder, because I know he has a prepared presentation. So if you remember, last year, we had funded an article at town meeting to provide for some design, preliminary design and feasibility study money for the site of 335 Lincoln Street. We, that article was approved, it was funded, done some of that work, which Bob will recap for us. And then that was all done in time for a November town meeting, which brought us to the point at which we were ready to purchase the property at 335 Lincoln, having been proved that the site would indeed work for the proposed use. Now, what's before us is a decision point about, do we want to move forward on an article that would appropriate money for finalizing an actual design of a building that we would use in town? That, you know, a Hingham Public Safety Facility would have a lot more specificity in it, a lot more research, a lot more investigative work, et cetera, that would go into the design, the final design for this facility beyond what was done as the part of the preliminary design and feasibility study. So that's what's before the town. I think Bob is going to recap some of that and kind of get into a little bit more detail.
Sure. And Bob, I see that you are unmuted, you are also listed as a co-host. I don't know if you're going to share your screen, but welcome if you could give your name and address and give us a little bit more details about the scope of Article N.
Excuse me, Mary, before you proceed, is his committee going to be calling itself into session? I just don't know what's being planned.
Thank you. You know, Bob, I do see that you, I believe you do have a quorum present. Do you need to call to order, or have you done that?
Okay, I haven't done it. I don't think the committee will have to take any actions, but why don't I call the meeting to order?
Were they posted?
I believe it was.
Okay.
Yes, it was all posted. So if we could have a, if all the different committee members could mention who they are, we'll make sure we have a quorum.
Kelly Lauter is here.
Joe Kelly? Oh, sorry, Joe Kelly.
Anna Smallwood.
Andy Touche.
Bruce Macaloney.
I'm here too, Paul Healy.
Okay, and Robert Garrity, and that's a unanimous appearance. Thanks for everybody making the show tonight. Okay, the best way, I'll try to quickly get to the point, but to do that, I think it's simple enough that I can just tell you what we've been doing for the last two months and what point we've gotten in the process. And that will be a great segue into how much money we would like the town to consider appropriating to move this project forward. After the property was purchased in the end of December, the next step for the committee was to decide whether we would recommend the continuation of the services of Castle Blues, which is the architectural firm that prepared the feasibility study and did some preliminary work on the schematic design from August, you know, through January. And so, under the law, we had the right to continue the services of Castle Blues into the subsequent phases of the project. So they've done a feasibility study, a partial schematic design, and the subsequent phases that we'll be talking about are, the next phase is the completion of the schematic design, the design development phase, the construction documents phase, the bid documents phase, and then the project, if it's funded all the way along here, would go to bid and there'd be a construction contract, it would be selected, and at that point, Castle Blues would be overseeing, as a designer does, the construction of the project. So there's a lot of work, we're at the very, very beginning of the design of this project, basically, and there's a lot of work to go through. So we, my committee, you know, with the assistance of J.R. Frey and Tom Zoutt, evaluated, in order to decide whether to recommend that we continue with Castle Blues, we reviewed a number of projects that they have, public safety projects, that they were the designer of record and the contractor, and they oversaw all the construction. We reviewed their... We reviewed their experience with the different owners and the owner's project managers on those projects to just confirm if they should be continued, if that was in the best interest of the time to continue it. It was a great exercise for some of my building committee members, and we ended up with a unanimous decision of my committee to recommend the approval of a continuation of services of Castle Booze into the future design phases. Now, naturally, a continuation of services is subject to funding by the town. So we were going through this process so that we would be able to, number one, determine if Castle Booze would be the final, the actual designer of record, and number two, whether we would have fun, be able to propose funding for the next town meeting. So we recommended the continuation, and the feedback we got from owners right across the board was excellent, that they really liked Castle Booze. Everyone indicated that they would hire them again if they had the opportunity to do so. So that's pretty good accolade there. So we've, since then, we have gone, we've spent a considerable amount of time negotiating a design contract with Castle Booze. We've gone through, we successfully negotiated the scope of design services that they would provide to the town for every single phase of the work in the future, from design development, completion of schematic design, design development, bid documents, and oversight of construction, and closeout of the project. We have also managed to negotiate, successfully negotiated a design fee with Castle Booze that would cover the entire phase of the work. What we, our intention would be is to, you know, subject again to funding, we would enter into a contract with them, and if there are funding limitations were in the contract, which we will be getting to that at the end, we would then, we would preface any, condition any subsequent phases of the work on satisfactory action by town meeting. So we negotiated a design fee, we've negotiated design services, we're currently in the process of finalizing the exchange of the contract boilerplate between Town Council and Castle Booze. And I don't see any kind of issues at all that would prohibit us doing that, but again, it would all be subject to favorable action of town meeting. Now, one thing I'd kind of like to just mention is that the schematic design phase is really the design of the project where the project is really getting designed. What was previously done was what we call a conceptual design for purposes of feasibility, and to determine if that, whatever the scope of the project was, whether it would fit on the site, whether it would work on the site, whether there was anything in particular that would make us think that this was not the right project for that site, or not the right site for that project. None of that, we all, we came across and unanimously determined even before that in December, that the site was feasible for the project that was presented as a conceptual design at that time. So, let me see. So during the schematic design and the design development that we hope will be funded by town meeting, the project will get, will proceed in a tremendous amount of detail to have a progressive design will occur on the project. There will be numerous public meetings by my committee, there will be numerous public meetings by all the permitting agencies in the town, that they'll, people will be able to understand exactly what the scope is of the project, exactly how it lines up with permitting requirements, and they will even be able to contest any decisions that we make, which are all preliminary, because it's a design and it keeps developing and evolving until such time as you finally go to bid with a final document, and then the contractor comes in. So there'll be plenty of time to figure out exactly what the project is going to be, how, you know, how expensive it's going to be. There'll be, there'll be cost evaluations all along, at every step of the way, we'll have an owner's project manager on board. So there's a lot to go with this project. Now, so at this point, we're almost all set to go with Castle Booze. We have an agreement in principle, let me call it that, and the actual written documents to wrap it up would be able to be put, come together very quickly if we get funding. The next concurrent step that we've been going through is we have to, by law, select an owner's project manager who will manage the project for the town. The OPM will oversee the designer's work, he'll oversee different estimates that are taken, and they'll do their own review estimates to make sure we're all in the same wavelength when it comes to the estimate, and they'll oversee the day-to-day construction of the project if it all goes ahead. So right now, we are, we've put together, we went out to receive proposals on applications for owner's project management services through Tom's office, and Kathy Riley has been critical in that, and so has been J.R. Frey, and put together a very good application process. We've gotten quite a few proposals from interested OPMs who want to work on this project. We've gotten, I believe it's 13, and many of those proposals are by very highly qualified OPM firms that do a lot of public work, that they know all the intricacies of dealing with public sector projects. And many of the proposers for OPMs have very specific knowledge and experience about public safety projects, both fire department, police department projects, they've worked on many of them. So the good news is we've got a great number of talented OPMs who want to work on this project. The bad news is we have to go through all those different proposals and find out, you know, who we, the town, will ultimately select to be the OPM. So we've also established a process that will guide us to go through the process of selecting the OPMs. Where currently, we've set up an evaluation team to do a review of the proposals. We'll, the hope is that, we're already reviewing all the proposals, and we'll be meeting later on in this week to start to go through reviewing the proposals. The plan is to get down the, get the number of qualified proposers down to probably three, and then we would schedule interviews with another group of people in town, as well as the Evaluation Committee, and we would interview all the proposers and try to get to the point where we would offer one, what would make one selection. We'd rank the last three proposers, we would then go to the first-ranked proposer and attempt to negotiate a contract and a design fee, or an OPM fee with that proposer, that would cover all the services that they would be asked to provide on the project. We, again, we've already drafted an OPM contract, it's not likely that there would be any really significant changes, they'd just be of a minor nature if we do get an OPM, if we do get funding to finalize a contract with an OPM. So we're through the OPM process, well, we're not through, we're at the beginning of the OPM process, and, but we will, I'd say we would have a, an OPM, hopefully within a month, with a fixed price for all the different phases of the work. So that will bring me to kind of our current, where we are currently, and what the town, what the different involved agencies in the town would like to do at this point in time. And from the latest direction, we understand that it would probably be, the best route to go would be to request money to fund the designer, Castle Booze, and the selected OPM through the completion of what we call design development documents. So by the end of that process, you've got a very well-defined project, you will have a very good estimate of what the likely costs will be. So what we are, what we're proposing is that we could ask town meeting, and should ask town meeting, to appropriate or authorize the expenditure of, whatever the terminology is, about $1,569,000. That would be comprised of KBA's costs, Castle Booze's costs of $1,169,000 for the completion of schematic design and completion of design development documents. And we also are budgeting, because we don't have a fixed figure yet for the OPM, but we budgeted about $400,000 for the OPM's fees to carry us through design development. And I believe we even are looking for some additional money beyond design development if the project proceeds that far with the OPM services. So the total amount that we're behind asking for is 1 million, I'm sorry, we have $1,569,000. We also have been fact, figuring out if we do get the money and we do complete the designs, what is the future schedule for getting later money and ultimately going to construction? And the plan, current plan, is that we would shoot for a November special town meeting, 2022, and at that time, we would ask for the complete, the money necessary to complete the design documents through bid documents, and we would also ask for the construction costs at that time. So it should be a really, really well-developed project by the end of design development of projects, documents, and it would be a completely designed project by the time it goes out to bid.
Mary, do you mind if I just?
Thank you.
Jump in real quick?
Yep. Sure.
I just wanted to clarify something Bob said at the end. Bob, I just wanted to make sure I understood. The plan is to go to April Town Meeting of '22 for the construction documents, and then Fall Town Meeting for the construction money itself. I just wanted to clarify one twist. Yeah.
Yeah, sure, we can do that, yeah.
And that, and that Fall Town Meeting where construction, under the schedule you've just laid out, excuse me, the Fall 2022 Town Meeting for construction funds, we would envision that that would be the same town meeting where town meeting would be asked to authorize construction funding for Foster School.
That's what we've been told by John Ferris, that's right. That's the schedule of the MSBA.
So this project, so this project is, this project is on a similar track, the two projects would be put forward to town meeting at the same time?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Joe, I'm going to, Joe Fisher is the Board of Selectmen liaison to this project, and Joe, I think what I might do is ask you to lead off, excuse me, with questions, questions and comments from the board with respect to this, to this project, kind of how it fits into the grand scheme of things, and, you know, some of the decisions that are being put in front of the board tonight for its consideration.
Sure. So Bob, thank you for the presentation. I mean, I know the amount of time and effort that's gone into this, not just by you, but by your entire committee. Each member of the committee has really devoted significant time and effort on the project, and you've only just begun. So really, thank you on behalf of the town. So my, my understanding of where we're at, and Bob, just, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong. The first part of your work was the feasibility study. And if you will, that created the outer bounds of the project to make sure that it would fit on this piece of land. And you established that, and we know that it's feasible. The second part, which you're talking about now, is the scope of the design, is, we know with the outer bounds, but let's figure out what, where this is going to go specifically for the town, cater it to the budget issues, to the needs of police and fire, and make sure we do something that is cost-efficient for the town and also meets the needs of the various departments. And that you are not requesting construction funding at this time. This is only the design part, because in part, we don't know how much it's going to cost. And that's part of what the design is going to give us. And that the town will be looking at funding construction as it looks at other town projects to make sure that we can move forward in tandem, as we've described. And so moving forward with this would not jeopardize Foster School. So I think the path that you've identified makes a lot of sense. And it's important to recognize that there are a lot of moving parts. We need to coordinate with the fire department, we need to coordinate with the police department, and ultimately, we need to get the design part handled so that we can move to the phase about the senior center, and make sure that the senior center has the time to be doing its planning, so that when the police department move out, they can get their work going, and the seniors of our community get the improvements that they deserve. So have I correctly described the process and where we're at at this point?
Yes, yes. I mean, basically, the feasibility study was looking at kind of like the maximum amount based upon, you know, the stated needs, but now it gets down to the point in design of really, you know, trying to get as much efficiencies as possible. The OPM helps out a lot there, so does the designer. And, you know, so.
Right.
You really begin down to the nuts and bolts, as opposed to just, how big is it going to be feasibly, will it fit on the site?
I mean, part of the danger in putting off even this phase, the design, is that it puts off further aspects of the project even more. And that we need to keep this going so that all the various pieces fall in place when they need to fall in place, and it gives the town the ability to coordinate this project with the school projects and other capital projects that we've heard about earlier this evening. So I think your plan makes a lot of sense. And I have no further comments or questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Bill, questions or comments for Bob?
Bob, thank you for the thorough presentation, and my thanks for the committee for all the work it's doing.
Okay. Before opening up to the public, Bob, I too want to thank you and the committee for all the work that you've done. My understanding, so, so my understanding is that when we do a project like Foster School that we're doing right now, the phase of the project that we're in right now with Foster School is both design and construction documents, so that basically, town meeting authorized money for design, and the next time town meeting will have a decision to make, it will be to allocate the construction money. So is it fair to say that what we've done here is, instead of asking town meeting for money for two activities, we're only asking for one? Would that be kind of a good way to summarize where we are?
You want me to take that, Mary?
Yeah, I don't know if it's Bob, or J.R., or Tom. I see J.R. is kind of nodding as well. I don't know who's best to answer that question.
I can take a stab at it. I think what we're trying to do is bifurcate, in essence, the remaining approval into two town meetings. But just to be clear, there are really two components to this ask. First is the OPM costs, and the second is the schematic designs.
Right. But originally. Right, and originally, Tom, so I think originally, we were thinking that this step might actually be three pieces. The OPM, the design and construction, and that, and that our thinking in the last few weeks has been, let's go for the OPM and the design, and then we'll have another, we will then have to go to town meeting in April of '22 to ask for money for the construction documents, which in a way gives town meeting the ability. which in a way gives town meeting the ability to sign off on the design. Where if you think about it in a different situation, town meeting wouldn't have that extra checkpoint, so to speak. Does that-
That's right.
JR, I see you're kind of nodding your head, so I'm-
Yes, that's accurate. And that other big piece is a... It does count as a significant investment because it's a big lift to get those construction documents done. That's where the designer takes all of those concepts and actually nails down every single detail that's going to be included in the plans and in the written specifications that will define what the final product will be. So it's a very big lift to get that piece done. Whereas through the design development phase, we can have a very strong understanding of what the budget for the project will be and a very strong understanding of what the results of the project will be without having defined details defined that would be legally defensible in a construction contract.
Yeah, thank you. I would just say that what I like about this approach is that I like the fact that town meeting kind of has to sign off every step of the way. I also like the fact that this really gives us the opportunity to have a much more public and robust discussion about the size and footprint of the building. I think to Joe's point, we know that the site can accommodate a building of a particular size. I think it was like 50,000 square feet. But I think the next question, and something I wrestled with quite a bit during the, you know, the feasibility work we did, is what is the appropriate size for Hingham? What is the appropriate size of a facility that reflects the programmatic needs of both departments? And I would just say to put an exclamation point on something Joe said with respect to the senior center. Right now, the path we are on, if everything works, if everything goes as expected and there are no delays, a new senior center is six to seven years out. And, you know, Joe, you were with me with Karen Johnson last year in the senior center when we heard from seniors who are hoping we can move quicker. And right now, I don't think we can make this go any quicker. But I would just point out that there are members of our community who have been very patient with respect to the senior center. With this timing, we're asking them to be patient a little bit longer. I would hate to see that timing get pushed out even further. My understanding tonight is that we are not going to be voting on this because your committee still has a little bit of work that you want to do with some of the information that KBA has provided. Is that correct?
No. No. KBA, we're actually at the point with KBA, which is by far the largest chunk of money that we're looking for here. We could wrap up with them very quickly to... In fact, we believe we're just about there when it comes to how much it would cost to get through design development documents. Yeah, because we've gotten a breakdown by them. And it's really... So that's the only loose end is the OPM because we haven't specifically identified one yet. But within a month, we will know just what that figure would be, too. And it's close.
Yeah. I'm going to suggest to my colleagues that I think we had anticipated that we would hear this Warren article tonight, but not necessarily take a vote. I think if my colleagues are amenable, I would propose that we stay on that path and take a vote next Tuesday. That's what, you know, that's what we've been doing with some of the Warren articles that are a little bit more significant. Bill and Joe, you okay, you know, voting in a week?
Yes.
I'll always choose it all.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to Article N? Okay, seeing none. Bob, thank you so much for... Thanks to you and the committee for all the work to bring Article N forward. We appreciate your being responsive to concerns raised by, you know, by the board with respect to timing and approach. And we will look forward to taking this up again on Tuesday night. And at that point, the board will be taking a vote. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Bob, before we sign off on this, I believe maybe we'll ask you to adjourn your committee because that way, if members wanted to part the meeting, welcome to stay, but they may not want to.
Yeah, entertain a motion to convene the meeting, to adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry.
Don't move.
That motion. Okay. Let's have a voice vote. Bob Garrity, I'm in favor. Yes.
Paul Healy, aye.
Calley, aye.
Joe Calley, aye.
First time.
Andy, aye.
Donna, aye.
Sounds like unanimous vote to me. So good night, folks. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. Have a good night. The next item of business on our agenda is the discussion of the FY '22 forecast and financial planning. And we're going to kind of do this in three pieces. We will start out, and I'm going to ask Town Administrator Tom Mayo to just kind of give us just a quick reminder of where we stand with respect to the FY '22 forecast. We are then going to look at some forecast sensitivity. And then with respect to financial planning, we are very fortunate tonight to be joined by two former chairs of our advisory committee, John Asher and Jim Taylor, who have been working to update a financial planning model that they and other advisory members had worked on a few years ago that is going to be very helpful to the town as we look at decisions that we're making to understand the impact to all of us as taxpayers. So Tom, perhaps if you could just start out with kind of a recap of where the forecast stands?
Sure, will do. Thank you, Mary. So currently, we're at about a $4.5 million projected deficit. You'll remember, that's down from the original projection of about a $7 million, a little over $7 million deficit. There are still some items that are being discussed on both sides of the ledger in terms of revenue as well as expenses. However, we're at 4.5 right now. There'll be some finalized discussions here in the next week or two that will prompt a new release of the forecast in the next, like I said, in the next week or two. I would remind us all, though, that we... Part of the way, the main way we got to the $4.5 million deficit down from seven was the use of $2.5 million of fund balance, in large part to offset, you know, some lost revenue, one-time lost revenue, one-time expenses and the like. So that's where we are, Mary.
And Tom, just sort of order of magnitude. I mean, you mentioned a $4.5 million deficit. There are a few pieces of new news coming in. How, you know, are we still most likely going to be sitting at a deficit a week from now? I mean-
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we might be able to correct this to, you know, several hundred thousand dollars maybe, but certainly nothing approaching 4.5 million.
Yep. Okay. So, you know, with that as a backdrop, one of the things that we've been looking at and thinking about is, you know, what are some different levers we can pull in the forecast? And what is some sensitivity? Not just with respect to fiscal year '22, but also for the out years. Particularly as the town is considering, for example, the question of whether to recommend or advance an override for town meeting's consideration. One of the questions that taxpayers are bound to ask us is, if we allow our taxes to be raised this year, what is the likelihood of future tax increases over the next few years? So Michelle, if you want to call up the forecast sensitivity, this is actually a little spreadsheet. We're going to put this on the website after this meeting. So if people are interested in downloading this, this is essentially... Thank you, Michelle. So just to give people a little bit of an orientation, this model is actually based off of our most recent version of the financial forecast dated February 22. And what you see in the top half of the screen are all of the different values that make up our different sources of funds. How the money that comes in, whether it's from the tax levy or local receipts. And if you look at about row 23, maybe, Michelle, if you can kind of highlight that, row 23 shows our total sources of funds. That's all the money that's coming in. Row 26 is all the different uses of funds, all the money that's going out. That's money for operating budgets. It's money for everything, capital outlay. And what you can see is, Michelle, if you could please highlight row C, cell C29, you'll see that for FY '22, we have a deficit, as Tom just mentioned, of about $4.5 million. So we're just going to run through kind of three quick scenarios. One thing that we've been asked quite a bit is why can't the town just use more of its fund balance to balance this budget? And I'm going to show you what happens if we do that. Michelle is going up to cell C19. And Michelle, let's assume that we're going to use an additional $4,550,531. Let's balance this budget with fund balance. Okay, so if you go down now and you look at fiscal year '22, we have a balanced budget for '22. So while we may think that our problem is solved, look at fiscal year '23. We have a $4.5 million deficit. Look at fiscal year '24. We have another $5 million deficit. And that deficit grows a little bit over time. This is why the financial policy for the town advises us against using fund balance to fund one-time expenses. And let's also remember that in our uses of funds, there is only about $400,000 of the expense requests this year that has been designated as one-time expenses. And those were expenses identified within the education budget. So if we're looking at hiring 30 permanent teachers, we want to make sure that we not only can pay their salaries in fiscal year '22, but also in the out years. And by the way, we don't have $4.5 million of excess fund balance. Right now, we have about $6 million. But our forecast right now is including using about $2.4 million of that. So even if we wanted to balance our whole budget with fund balance, we just don't have enough money. Michelle, if you could zero that out. So another question, and, you know, the board has been hearing from people that from many of our fellow citizens who say it's time for Hingham to do an override. And we would be willing to allow our taxes to be raised to allow additional services to be provided. Now, an override, as we all know, is a permanent tax increase. So Michelle, if you go up to cell C9, which is FY '22, let's see what a $4,550,531 override does. Okay, now if you scroll down and you look at fiscal year '22, we have a balanced budget. But notice what happens in the out years. The numbers get a lot better. The numbers get a lot better because an override is a permanent tax increase. Michelle, if you could please go up to FY '23 to the levy to cell D6. Compare the tax levy in '22 versus '23. It grows by that $4 million. That's why we say an override is a permanent tax increase because it becomes part of the base for the calculations for future years. So we're going to get into what that means for us as taxpayers. But a $4.5 million override actually improves our forecast. And as we look out and we look at that forecast surplus and deficit, we could say to the taxpayers, with a $4.5 million override, we will pretty much have a balanced budget for the next five years. But there's also one other consideration. Those of you who have been attending our discussions about the forecast may remember that implied in the assumptions for our uses of funds is that municipal and education budgets will grow by 2%. And that assumption is built into the forecast because our revenues typically only grow by about 2.5%. So let's take a look and see what happens if we allow those budgets to grow by a rate greater than 2%. Michelle, why don't you type 2.5 in for municipal? And why don't you type 4.5 in for the schools? Okay, so now, if you look down on row 37, and Michelle, maybe you could highlight that, that actually shows the change to the surplus or the deficit if we allow the costs to grow by an amount greater than 2%. So in fiscal year '23, we would have $145,000 surplus if the budgets grew by 2%. If they grew by 2.5% and 4.5% respectively, we would have a deficit of $1,000,000. And look at what happens in FY '24. The deficit goes to about $3.5 million. Some of you may have heard the board talking last week about the possibility that overrides can lead to more overrides. This is what we're talking about. And while you could argue that maybe in fiscal year '23, we could find $1,000,000. When you get a deficit above about $2 million in a given year, it's really hard to close that. So Michelle, why don't you go up in fiscal year '24 and put in a $3.5 million override? Okay, so now, if we go back down to row 37, you'll notice that in fiscal year '24, we've got a little bit of a surplus. But look at '25. We have a $2 million deficit. And look what happens in '26, a $4.3 million deficit. If you notice the... Michelle, if you notice... If you notice, if you look at row 35, you see some percentages. That is the change, that is the growth rate of our expenses year over year. And if you look at row 24, row 24 shows the percentage growth in our revenue. Our revenue, excluding an override, our revenue typically grows by about 2.5% or 3% in a year. If our costs grow by more than that, that's when we create a structural deficit. So one of the challenges and one of the things that... Bill and Joe, I won't speak for you, but one of the things that I am struggling with as I'm thinking about how we move forward is the potential for Hingham to be in a situation where we have to have overrides every two or three years just to keep things going. We know that whether it's municipal services or educational services, there are new things we want to do in the future. Overrides to maintain the services we have make it more difficult to do that. And if we layer on the fact that we also have some very ambitious plans with our facilities, the cumulative taxpayer impact could be significant. I think our board has talked at length in many ways that community support for Foster School is our top priority. I think one of the things that I'm thinking about as I'm thinking about how to move forward with this budget is to not do anything to jeopardize that. You know, what is the taxpayers... At what point will enough Hingham taxpayers say, "I'm not willing," or "I'm not in a position to absorb another tax increase"? That's a question that's hard to know the answer to. But anyway, that's where we are. Joe, maybe I'll throw it to you first for questions or comments. And Michelle, I don't know if you want to set those things all back to zero. I don't know if Joe- I don't know if Joe, Joe, kind of thoughts about forecast and sensitivity and what it means as we move forward?
Well, first, this is quite an impressive tool. It really shows the impacts. And one of the lines that you did not highlight was line 40, which is the cumulative surplus or cumulative deficit. And that is, in my view, the magnitude of the hole that we would be falling into. So, I mean, it's an incredible analysis. Where would we, or what would we change on this spreadsheet to reflect the foster school financing?
So that'll be the next model that you'll see momentarily.
Okay, don't mean to jump the gun, okay.
Yeah, so the foster school, Joe, what would happen is that foster school would come in to the debt exclusion row on row 10. That would come in, that would come in as revenue, that's extra money that we're paying.
Yep.
And then what you would see is, in the uses of funds, there would be an equal offsetting amount that would be the interest plus principal payment every year.
Yep.
So in a debt exclusion, it doesn't change the deficit, because an equal amount of revenue and expenses come in.
Okay. In the past, I'm looking at row 7, in the past, we have not, the town has not always increased its levy by 2.5%. This model assumes the full 2.5%. Is that correct?
That's right. You'll see in row 11, in 2011, we did not levy, we did not levy half a million dollars. And given the financial situation, it's Tom and Michelle's recommendation that we levy to the full amount. And that seems sensible, given where we are right now.
Does the model account for the, I'm not sure what the right term is, the amount of the levy that is ultimately not collected, either because of hardship issues or just failures to pay, abatements? Is that reflected in the model?
Yeah, so in the top line, in row 6, that says the levy.
Yep.
And this ties to our five-year forecast. The levy is adjusted by a modest amount to reflect any collections. Our collection rate is like 99%. So our treasure collector, Jean Montgomery, gives us some guidance on adjusting that. But I think, and I appreciate the question, Joe, for FY 22, we are assuming that the pandemic will not have an impact on our collections of tax revenue.
Yep.
We haven't seen it so far in fiscal year 21. And we are basically forecasting that there will be no impact in 22.
Yep. So the solution to everything you've spoken about this evening on this topic is really row 8, new growth. And what can we do to affect that, to increase that, so that more money is coming into the town?
Yeah. You know, if you look at that new growth line right now, that reflects a lot of the typical things we see in a given year. Additional amounts come from big development projects like we've seen in the past at the shipyard or Linden Ponds. You know, as you know, one of Hingham's best opportunities is South Hingham.
Yes.
It's important, it's important to keep in mind that the new growth, the new growth, actually, we can start collecting tax revenue when a project comes online. So that means it has to be built, it has to be open. So, you know, as we're looking at South Hingham, a question is whether there will be any activity where there will be, you know, new development that is open and operating within the five years that are in this forecast.
Mary, do you mind if I jump in on that for a second?
Please, Tom.
I just wanted to point out that in years past, we had seen a big bump in the new growth numbers. And like Mary said, in large part, those were, you know, projects like Avalon and Broadstone Bear Cove, and even Brio to some extent, though Brio's not affordable housing. But the, those are some of the projects in recent years. I just wanted to point out and remind everyone that now that the town has achieved its 10% state mandated goal of 10% affordable housing in town, some of those building opportunities are less likely to emerge in Hingham. Those builders would prefer to go to communities where they don't have to deal with local zoning the way they will now in Hingham. So some of those opportunities that we had seen in the past might not, would likely not evolve, not come to fruition here in Hingham like the way they used to.
But at the same time, the zoning board and other permitting agencies in town are sensitive to the needs of both the town as well as developers and do work to have those projects.
Yeah, of course.
Correct. Sure. I mean, if you think about the 43D that the town, the town meeting adopted several years ago, that's streamlining the permitting process. If you also think about the fact that the town has one tax rate, we are trying to make Hingham an attractive destination. Joe, I'd make one other point. If you look at those new growth numbers, and, you know, you mentioned those numbers at the bottom in green and the cumulative surplus or deficit. Michelle, if you could, put a $4.5 million override in 22 and put a 4.5%, put the 4.5% and 2.5% growth rates in again. Even with a 4.5 million dollar override this year, if we assume cost growth of 2.5% and 4.5%, we have an $18 million cumulative deficit over five years. There's not enough new growth potential in Hingham to close that $18 million gap. And I guess what I would suggest is that the solution to this is not just on the revenue side, but on the expense side.
Yep.
And to the extent that our, to the extent that our revenue, our expenses are outpacing our revenue growth, we're out of balance. And I doubt there's a community in Massachusetts whose revenue is growing by 4.5% consistently year in and year out. I just, you know, I don't think there's one silver bullet here.
That's, I see exactly what you're saying. And so one last point that I think you're going to get to later, which is, with the overrides or however else this is handled, how's that going to affect the amount of real estate tax that each of our residents are paying?
Yep, so you are asking the questions to lead into the
But I didn't want to preempt Bill.
To our next model.
He made other questions.
Yeah, no, you know, again, you know, we can look at all this, but you're making a good point, which is, we can make all these, you know, we can solve this math exercise, right? This forecast, in some ways, is kind of doing some math. But what we have to remember is that, is that we are asking our fellow citizens to raise their taxes, and it's incumbent on us to build value for the additional services they will be providing and to demonstrate that we are, we are operating in a fiscally responsive way. So, Bill, did you have any questions or comments on this forecast sensitivity?
Mary, if you could, I got some comments over the past week about using fund balance to deal with the revenue issue. And would you mind, I know you started off with it, would you mind, for those on the line, explaining what happens if we take the fund balance and we plug it into these deficits? Because I think a lot of citizens in town, they look at the $30 million or whatever it is now, and they say, well, just take a couple million out, plug the holes in the budget, which makes perfect sense to people, but there are consequences to doing that. If you could just show that again, that would be helpful to me.
Sure. So, Michelle, why don't you zero out the override in C 9? And then, Michelle, if you could, go down to, yeah, go down in there, and let's put in $4,550,531. Okay, so we're okay for 21, for 22. Now, let's say we go to fiscal year 23. So, Michelle, and by the way, if we allow the costs to grow at those higher rates, in fiscal year 23, we have a $6.2 million deficit. So, Michelle, put $6,200,000 into fund balance in 23. Okay, so we've solved it for 23, but we have an $8.3 million problem in 24. So why don't you plug in $8,200,000 in 24? Okay, now, in 25, we have a $10 million problem. So, Bill, I think what, so if you look at this, if we keep using fund balance to balance our budget, we are not only using up our excess, but we're dipping into the principal, which the rating agencies have told us would cause a downgrade. But the bigger issue here is that we're going to run out of money. Right there, if you see those four years Michelle entered in, that's $28 million. That's about our whole fund balance. And it's gone in four years. And in fiscal year 26, we have a $13 million deficit. So that's, that's the risk here.
And that is in addition to our financial advisors warning us that our bond rating would be downgraded to at least double A, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if we were to burn through our fund balance in that way, it would be, it would be at least, you know, at least, at least one downgrade. You know, there's the other part of this that we need to remember, which is that, is that also our fund balance is intended to be our rainy day fund. And this past year, we were very lucky that we had $3.5 million that we could plug into our forecast this year for revenue relief, for revenue loss in 21 because of the pandemic. We were able, we were able to do that where other communities, you know, it was either Hanover or Norwell, you know, they had to furlough people because they didn't, they didn't have the fund balance. So, you know, that's a little bit of concern. Michelle, if you could zero those out, I would point out, and I think Tom mentioned it at the beginning, if you look at cell C 18, we are actually taking $2.4 million of our fund balance to be used for this year, representing temporary revenue loss and one-time expenses. So we are, we are using some of our fund balance.
Thank you.
Okay, I think what I'm going to do is, before we open it up to questions from the public, I want to kind of complete this with the, with the potential impact on the taxpayers. And I would like to introduce John Asher and Bill Ramsey, John Asher and Jim Taylor. You guys are next to each other on my screen. Sorry about that, Jim.
That's fine. It's a compliment. Thank you.
To just walk through the, this sort of second model, which is basically a way to say, how would things like overrides and debt exclusions impact taxpayers? Jim, I believe you're able to share your screen, so I'll turn it to the two of you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Jonathan Asher, 5 Common Street, joined by Jim Taylor, 3 Grist Mill Lane. Basically, what Jim and I are going to do, given what you've just walked through, Mary, with the forecast sensitivity, we're kind of going to take that macro view and get a little more micro by walking through the financial planning model that was originally built at the request of the advisory committee back in 2017. And what Jim and I have done over the course of the last couple of months is to modify it so that it would address not only debt exclusions due to capital project borrowing, but also the potential impact from a property tax perspective of operating overrides. So what I'm going to do is basically position the model, and then we will walk quickly through four scenarios somewhat similar to what you did, Mary. The financial planning model that you're looking at basically is an Excel workbook with 14 supporting worksheets. In the interest of time, we're only going to focus on the most important three. You're looking at the first of those three in overview, which basically is just a description that I'm going to summarize right now. Second is dashboard, and third is the actual model itself. So as the overview states, the model's purpose is to show the property tax impact of new excluded debt borrowing and/or implementation of operating overrides over the course of the next 10 fiscal years, FY 2022 through FY 2031. So basically, we extend the five-year forecast, Mary, that you were just displaying, for an additional five years. The model aggregates and manipulates data from several town sources. The latest five-year forecast and 15-year debt schedule from the town accountant, the latest town assessor information about the town's taxable property, and interest rate guidance from the town's longtime financial advisor, Capital Markets Advisors. The model calculates the property tax impact on the average assessed value property. That average value of $875,347 represents all of the town's taxable parcels, so residential as well as commercial, industrial, and personal property. Importantly, the model does not forecast how the additional revenues from new excluded debt borrowing or operating overrides would be apportioned within the town budget, nor does it contemplate use of other sources of revenue beyond those in the five-year forecast. For example, as you were just displaying, the use of excess unassigned fund balance. The model worksheet is where all the data is aggregated and manipulated. And we won't go there unless people have some detailed questions. We're going to focus mostly on the dashboard worksheet, which is where users input their what-if values for new excluded debt and/or operating override amounts and timing. So with Jim displaying the dashboard worksheet, which you can see, let's jump right into the first of the four scenarios we'll walk you through, which is basically business as usual. No new excluded debt and no operating override for the next 10 fiscal years. Jim and I call this the base case. As you can see, if you scroll down, there are a lot of zero values on the dashboard inputs, both in the yellow excluded debt column and the green operating override appropriation column, as well as in the rows below that are in the summary results. As you can see, under the summary results bar, the total taxpayer impact over 10 years in row 20 is $3,102, due to assessment increases, Proposition 2.5 increases, and CPA surcharge additions. The average annual increase over the 10 years is $310 per taxpayer. The two red highlighted boxes to the right of the 10-year box show the totals and annual averages for the two five-year periods, FY 2022 through FY 2026, and FY 2027 through FY 2031. As you see, in the yellow and green highlighted rows, rows 20- As you see, in the yellow and green highlighted rows, rows 22 and 24, there is zero property tax impact from either new excluded debt or operating override in this base case scenario. Further down in summary results and in the results detail section, you see several values repeating since there is no new excluded debt or operating override impact in any fiscal year. The dashboard bar chart, Jim, if you just scroll all the way down, shows only growth of the base property tax over the next 10 fiscal years, represented by those blue columns. So, that's scenario one, the base case. Now, let's see what happens if we introduce some new excluded debt borrowing, and let's borrow $80 million in FY 2025. So, Jim, if you enter that, enter $80 million in FY 2025, please.
Sure.
Okay, so now, some things are beginning to change. On the dashboard, in the yellow highlighted row 22, you can see that the 10-year total taxpayer increase is $4,962, $1,501 of which occurs in the first five-year timeframe, and the remaining $3,461 during the second five-year interval. And the reason is because the borrowing was done late in the timing of the first interval. In other words, 2025 out of the, the five-year interval, 2022 through 2026. The rightmost blue column above in the dashboard inputs displays in row eight the estimated 3.25% interest rate for long-term borrowing in FY 2025. The dashboard now shows that the 10-year total taxpayer increase is $8,064, the sum of the original $3,102, just due to business as usual, and the $4,962 from the new excluded debt, debt service payments. In the summary results column for FY 2025, which is column G on row 32, you can see that the average property tax increase increases by $759 or 6.5% from the base property tax of $11,669 at the top of that column. So, that's the first-year effect of the borrowing of $80 million and the debt service payments that are associated with that borrowing.
And just as a reminder, John, this is for what we consider the average assessed value home, which currently is $875,000. So, you know, a taxpayer could certainly look at the percentage increase and apply it to their own situation.
Right, and yes, indeed. On row 43, what you see is on a year-to-year basis, the average property tax in FY 2025 increased by $1,067 or 9.4% from the FY 2024 base tax due to annual prop 2 and 1/2 increase combined with the tax impact of the new excluded debt. Further to the right, on the summary results, highlighted in yellow on the dashboard in row 22, you can see the, the total remaining new excluded debt service that's due after FY 2031. In other words, FY 2032 through when the debt is retired in FY 2044. That amount, $63,830,000, is approximately, and using the tax rate associated with 2031, that equates to about $7,133 for each taxpayer over that remaining 13-year period, or roughly $549 a year for that debt service, the tail that extends beyond this 10-year planning horizon. Jim, if you now scroll down to the bar chart again, now what you see are the property tax impacts of the new excluded debt in yellow that are stacked on top of each fiscal year's base property tax bar in blue. So, now let's do a third scenario. So, Jim, if you go back up to the dashboard, zero out that $80 million of new excluded debt, and let's see the effect of a hypothetical operating override of $6 million in 2023, FY 2023. Okay, now, the green highlighted row, row 24 on the dashboard summary, shows that the 10-year total increase from the operating override is $6,830 for the average taxpayer. What's really interesting about this, and very relevant to the questions being asked previously, is that is a larger taxpayer impact than from the $80 million excluded debt borrowing we just saw in scenario two. The 10-year total tax increase is now $9,932, the sum of the base property tax growth of $3,102, and the impact of the operating override of $6,830. Row 34 on the dashboard summary results shows that the property tax increase from the operating override increases each year from FY 2024 forward since the initial override amount, in this case, $6 million in FY 2023, compounds annually due to the prop 2 and 1/2 increases of the tax levy. That's the point that, Mary, you were just making a few minutes ago. Jim, if you scroll down now to the bar chart one more time, what you now see are the green highlighted, operating override property tax impact, impacts stacked on the base property tax bars still in blue. So, finally, now let's see what it looks like when we do both. So, Jim, if you would go back and add, add back in, re-enter $80 million for FY 2025, new excluded debt borrowing, leave the $6 million operating override for FY 2023. And I will make the point, as you can see in looking at those two columns, and kind of just springboarding off what Mary said just a few minutes ago, when this tool is made available, and I think that will be fairly quickly, users can input multiple values in both the excluded debt as well as the operating override appropriations columns. We're, we're just doing one entry in each, in the interest of time and simplicity. But you could do, you could see the tax impact of all the numbers that was Mary was putting, asking Michelle to put into the forecast sensitivity model here as well, and see how that impacted the average property tax. Now, the dashboard summary results show a 10-year total property tax increase of $14,893, the sum of the base property tax increase of $3,102, the increase from the new excluded debt of $4,962, and then from the operating override, the increase of $6,830. The yellow and green highlighted rows now contain the same values you saw separately in scenarios two and three. In dashboard row 43, you can see the jumps in the average property tax from FY 2022 in column D to FY 2023 in column E shows from $302 to $986 due to the operating override in FY 2023. And from FY 2024 to FY 2025, it goes from $1,008 to $1,791 due to the new excluded debt borrowing. And finally, if you scroll down to the bar chart one last time, now you see all three elements and the impacts. The base property tax in blue, operating override property tax increase in green, and new excluded debt property tax increase in yellow. So, that's a whirlwind tour through the financial model. I'd like to offer a, a special thank you to Sue Nickerson, our town accountant, and Aaron Walsh, the town assessor, obviously to Tom Mayo and then Michelle Montziger, as well as the four advisory committee members who previously reviewed the model with Jim and me and offered some very valuable suggestions for improvement. Our understanding is that the model will be made available to the public, but Tom or Michelle can speak better to the timing and mechanics of that. And so, Jim and I will now yield the floor and are happy to address any questions.
John and Jim, thank you. A model that produces these summary charts and quick graphs and things, the more simplistic the output, the more, the greater the time investment in, in making it simple. Yeoman's work required to, to get this. And its, its utility as a decision tool now and going forward is, is just invaluable. So, thank you. We are going to, you know, make this available tomorrow on the town website so people can download it, you know, can input values, try different things out. I'm, I'm going to go to my colleagues. Bill, maybe I'll just go to you first. Questions or comments for John and for Jim on this taxpayer model?
And no questions, Mary. My thanks to John and Jim for their, for the time they put into this.
Okay, Joe?
An amazing demonstration of the power of this analysis. Thank you. No, I, I really do not have any questions. Thank you very much.
John and Jim, you, you did some good scenarios, but just as a way to, could, could I ask you to put a $4.5 million override in 22 and take the override out of 23? Just, you know, to bridge with what we just did. So, it, it looks to me as if a $4.5 million override will have a $577 a year impact on the average assessed tax bill, or about an additional 5% increase. Is that right?
Yes, on average.
That's the average over 10 years, Mary. Jim, if you scroll down, you can, there you go. It's the 521.
Okay, so in, yeah, so in 22, in 22, it looks like my taxes, if, if this were my house, my taxes would be going up. I'd have about an 8% tax increase.
That's right.
Correct.
Okay, and then it looks like, then again, in 2025, I would have an additional 14% increase?
Off the base of FY 24, yep.
Yep, so, so, if you think about this scenario, this would be, you know, balancing this year's budget with an override. And, and one could say that fiscal year 25, the debt exclusion, you know, while we don't have firm costs, the, the cost of foster school and potentially a public safety facility, $80 million is, is probably somewhere within range. It, it could go higher. Could you scroll down to the graph? So, you know, Bill and Joe, as, as, as we, and, you know, as all of us in the town are looking at, at this, this is going to be a very powerful tool to help us understand and help taxpayers understand what this might mean. Our challenge is always to balance the delivery of services with the investment in capital while being mindful of tax rates. And this year, that challenge feels particularly difficult. We've talked about working collaboratively with our colleagues in the advisory committee and school committee, and, and all of us being informed by the public as to the best path forward. I am mindful of the cumulative taxpayer impact of the things we're looking at, and, and also understanding that foster school being such a high priority for this town, it would be unfortunate if, if the town were to advance a tax policy that creates opposition or causes foster school not to move forward. That's, you know, the, the, the hard part to sort of know in all of this is, is, is sort of what is, what is the willingness and ability of taxpayers to support these things? John and Jim, that is terrific. I think at this stage, and, Jim, maybe we'll ask you to, I'm going to open this up to questions and comments from the public. Maybe we'll stop sharing the screens. To the extent that members of the public have questions about models, maybe Jim and Michelle can be sort of at the ready. Again, to the extent that you have a question or comment, if you could please identify yourself and give your address for the record. If you could please address questions or comments to the chair, and we can, we can divert those as necessary. Anyone have a, a question? Mr. Ross?
There we go. Hi, Joshua Ross, 125 Wampertuck Road. First off, thank you for the spreadsheets. I am at heart a numbers guy, so it is very useful. And I do, I've spent many, many years creating spreadsheets like that, so I, I also understand the work that goes behind it. So, I have two questions, one on each, one on each chart, if that's okay, Mary. So, on the forecast, you show a 2% increase for school expenditure increase every year. My question is, is knowing that the school increases at minimum, even just for salaries per contractual purposes, are close to 4%, I'm just curious how the forecast can put in 2% when we know, based upon contracts, it's, it's way more than that. Isn't it just going to screw up the forecast for years?
So, Josh, I'll, I'll answer that question and then, and then take your other question. You know, this is, this is a question that has been asked from time to time over the years. You know, if you look, if you look at our revenue, our revenue is growing by about, you know, 2 and 1/2 or 3% a year. And the forecast really is, is a revenue tool. And the expenses show one way to spread those costs out, to, to spread those costs. I would argue that, that all of those costs are actually, you know, they are controllable. They are controllable by, by the number of people that we hire, whether it's, it's a municipal employee or a school employee. It is controllable at what salary we bring people in. And certainly, the salary ranges are, are subject to collective bargaining. I, I frankly am, if, if, I guess the point I would make is that if I look at, if I look at any expense budget, particularly a large one such as the school budget, if that budget grows by 4 and 1/2% a year, I think what we've seen is that we have a sustainability issue. And, and so, the idea to me of incorporating that into the forecast and saying it, it sort of is what it is, that, that doesn't feel right to me, particularly since we're, particularly since our revenue is, is growing at, at the rate it is. I, as we're looking at this year, I think what we're trying to do is to look and say, what is a reasonable balance going forward with respect to both our revenue and our costs? So, anyway, I, I hope that addresses it. Your second question?
It does. Thank you. So, on, on the, on the chart, Jim, if you guys could put in a per-month cost, not just the annual cost. I think when we look at these numbers, they tend to be really big numbers. And when people pay their bills, they pay it on a monthly basis. So, I think, you know, when we start talking about this stuff, I think it would be really helpful when people are kind of comparing apples and apples to say, oh, they, okay, so it may be $1,400 for the year. But if we break it down on a monthly basis to kind of put it into our monthly expenses, maybe just be easier to explain going forward. I, I'm sure it's not easy to throw it in there, but I, I don't know if that's an option to put it into the forecasting model. Thank you.
We can certainly look at it, Josh. I would say, kind of on the point you're making, since the property tax bills are quarterly, maybe quarterly is a little more useful than monthly. I think what Jim and I were trying to do, I mean, I'm kind of smiling at your question because, I mean, you know this too, if you work with spreadsheets. What we've displayed tonight is a greatly simpler view than if we had taken the model as we built it in 2017 and just added operating override. I mean, you need a truck to carry that thing in. So we've tried to simplify it just to aid understanding by folks who aren't as familiar with working in spreadsheets. But I, I think you're making a good point. Let me, you know, we'll take the, take the to-do to kind of look at it and see if quarterly might not jive better with people's bill paying when they're paying their property taxes.
That's the other reason we incorporated, we incorporated the percentages as well, so that, you know, that folks could do a more of an apples-to-apples comparison in their own situation.
Thank you. Matthew Pertel?
Hi, can you hear me there?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Matt, Matt Pertel, 451 Main Street. I'm, I'm trying to get my head around the concept of the fund balance, sort of being new to a lot of this. Can you explain, we, we've come across some, some data that's been published by the Department of Revenue showing our, our fund balance being in excess of $10 million more than some of our, some of our peer towns. So one, I want to, you know, see if you could just talk to the rationale carrying such a higher fund balance in some of our peer towns. This is some dated information, but I'm assuming that it's probably trended in the same way. Secondly, just as it pertains to some of the schools in the school situation we've had, I think, you know, the superintendent and the school committee would admit that based on some of the recent data that shows that, you know, based on some of these assessments, that our kids are behind and they need to catch up. And there's a recovery fund that's being proposed in, in relation to putting the resources into the schools to help our kids catch up when they go back, which I think we would all agree is probably one of the most important things in the town today. So can we talk about two things? One, why we're running such a high fund balance. And two, your thoughts on allocating, you know, three or four million of those funds to this recovery fund to help, which is, what is probably the biggest problem in the town right now, and that's, that's catching our kids up in the schools.
Sure. Thank you for both of your questions. And I'll preface, Mr. Pertel, by saying that right now, I think the board and, and also the advisory committee, we're still in the process of internalizing everything. And, and I don't think any, any firm decisions have, have really been made on sort of a path forward. And I'd also just let you know that Joe Fisher's children graduated from the Hingham Public School System. I have a student, my youngest is still in the Hingham Public School System. And Bill Ramsey has three children currently enrolled in the Hingham School System. So we are, we are also, we, we are Hingham School parents as well. With respect to your first question on fund balance, Hingham has a town financial policy and you can actually find that on the town website by clicking on the advisory committee page. And there is a financial policy. Our financial policy, which is reviewed and developed by the advisory committee, basically calls for our fund balance to be, to be in a range that represents 16% to 20% of our annual town expenses. And Jim Taylor was actually on the advisory committee one year when, Jim, I think you led the effort to, to revise the policy. But basically, that's the, that's the denominator in the equation. In setting the, in setting the guideline of 16% to 20% of expenditures, that was based on input from our financial advisors. And it was also looking at our peer communities, not just in Massachusetts, but around the country, AAA communities. A typical, a typical AAA rated community has a fund balance that's usually in excess of 30% of annual expenditures. Because here in Massachusetts and here in Hingham, we have a relatively more stable tax base. A 16% to 20% range is the range that, that our financial advisors tell us and the rating agencies have affirmed is appropriate for a AAA bond community. Right now, our fund balance is actually at, and by the way, I'm sorry, Mr. Pertel, that's the, that's the unassigned fund balance because within Hingham's fund balance, we have, we have some, some categories of our fund balance that are actually committed already. So the True Rainy Day Fund is a subset of that. And actually, one of our inside town finance summaries just, just went through that a week or two ago, if, if, if that's a helpful reference. So right now, our unassigned fund balance, and the range is 16% to 20%, is at about 25%. So in, in dollars, that means we have $6 million more dollars in fund balance above our financial policy. Our financial policy also defines, if we're in that situation, what can we do with the money? And it talks about things like using it to pay down debt, using it to defray the cost of capital projects, using it for tax relief, using it to pay off liabilities. And one thing it says is, is not to use it for recurring operating costs. We, I'm, I'm not sure if you were on the call, but we went through, we went through a little bit of an illustration of what happens. Now, what we are doing for this year is we are saying that we think that it's appropriate to use $2.4 million of that surplus to pay for some one-time costs that are associated with kind of catch-up or recovery, as well as for some lost revenue within the school budget. So we, we are applying a, a good portion of that fund balance. The, the difficulty we have right now is that in, you know, in the school budget hearing that we had with, with the school department last week, what Dr. Austin has indicated is that the majority of his recovery budget, which is about 34 positions, that he sees all of those as being permanent positions. He doesn't see them going away in a year, in two years. He, he says that he thinks that they need to be permanent. And so the difficulty we find ourselves in is if, if indeed these costs are permanent, how do we make sure we have the ability to continue paying for those resources? One of the things that we've asked Dr. Austin is if there are any of those positions that perhaps could be hired on a contract basis, which would, which would make them a candidate for additional use of fund balance. And Dr. Austin has committed to looking at that, although he's also indicated that in some cases, that's easier said than done. So anyway, that's, that's a little bit of fund balance, that's a little bit about fund balance. It's, you know, we're also, I, I think, you know, with respect to, to catch-up and recovery, I think that one of the reasons that we are putting an override on the table for this year is because we understand the unique situation that we're in. We also think that, that our budgets, you know, they've been sort of lean and mean for quite a long time. And as much as we've tried to keep providing additional services to the taxpayers of Hingham, we're finding that our ability to stretch the dollars we have is, is limited and is constrained. And so we're looking at that. I'd add one more thing with respect to the forecast. That's a big variable for all of us right now. And that is, what is the potential impact of any American Rescue Plan? I, I believe that's what the bill through Congress is called. But what might that mean? And, you know, that, that, that could, that could solve a lot of the challenges that we have this year. So as, as we're moving forward, we're also keeping our eye on that and, and what that could mean. So thank you for your questions. I see somebody has their hand up. Jen?
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Sorry, this is Jen Murphy, 29 Bradley Hill Road. My question is maybe sort of building on Matt's question with respect to how we compare to peer towns. Can you explain a little bit about what the property tax rate is in Hingham and how that compares to some of our comparable towns in the South Shore?
Sure, Jen. So this, this is, winging this, winging this a little bit. But I'll speak to a couple of things. First of all, if you look at Hingham's tax rate, you know, our tax rate of, you know, $11.30 per thousand, and I, maybe I don't have that number wrong. If, if you look at how we rank among our benchmark communities, we, we rank, we rank somewhere between about like 10 and 15. I'm going off memory. But let's also remember that our tax rate is, is in many ways a function of the, the tax levy as well as assessed values. So, you know, there's, there's a couple of different things going on. If you look at the average residential tax bill in Hingham, and, and I'm happy, if, if you want to send me an email, I'll send you a presentation from last December that was made to the advisory committee and school committee. If you look at Hingham's kind of average residential tax, tax bill, we're sort of somewhere in the middle. One place where we're very different is that if you look at our tax levy, the money that, that's coming in, 89% of it comes from residential. We only get about 11% of our revenue from commercial. And, you know, if you compare us, for example, to Needham, which is one of our benchmark towns, Needham has a much higher developed commercial base. And so as we're, as we're thinking about, for example, property tax increases, we're understanding that the very high percentage of those are going to fall on, on all of us as residents and not necessarily on the commercial businesses. I'm also aware tonight that the advisory committee is meeting at the same time. And Dave Anderson from the advisory committee has done some benchmark work, looking at, looking at this kind of taxation question with benchmark communities. And I, I, I might suggest, if I could, that you may want to follow up with the chair of the advisory committee for a copy of his work because I saw it a few days ago. And I, I think it may help answer your question this evening a little bit better than I can. Thank you. Matt Cosman?
Hey, Mary. Matt Cosman, 1275. My question's on the, the bond rating. And I'm just trying to understand, so I understand that advisory committee has, has placed that as a constraint or, or a guideline. Can you just talk a little bit about if we were, if Hingham were to move to AA? What, like, what does that actually mean?
Yeah. So I, I'm, I'm going to chime, I, I will answer that, Matt. And then I, I'm also going to ask John Asher or Jim Taylor if they want to add to anything because this, this is, this is their professional world a little bit more than mine. You know, if you, if you, so first of all, Hingham's AAA bond rating affords us access to the most competitive rates in the market, whether we're, you know, whether we're borrowing money to, to buy a fire truck or to buy a water company. This past year, we financed the water company at a rate of 2.145%. And if you look at the potential interest savings from a AAA to a AA, it was several million dollars. If you look when we bonded the middle school in 2015, and, and again, I'm, I'm going off memory, but I'm happy to send you a copy of, of some documents from our financial advisors. We saved, we saved a couple of million dollars on, on that, on that project. Going back to 2008, people who were here at that time may remember that we were trying to finance East School during the middle of the global financial crisis. And at that time, the credit markets were frozen. And the, the only, the only people who could get credit were the AAA communities. So, you know, if, if you're looking at sort of the interest rate piece, the benefit of the AAA versus the AA, it, it also depends on interest rates at the time, Matt. So right now, for example, with interest rates so low, the spread between the double and the triple isn't so great. But if you go back to 2015 to 2008, it's a little wider. There's also a bigger issue here, which is that a AAA rating, if, if you think about the benefit of the AAA rating, some of it is the interest rates, but a big part of it is the underlying practices that lead to the AAA rating. So it's things like solid management, conservative budgeting principles. And, and what does that AAA get us? Well, it means that, that businesses want to come here to Hingham. We're, we're an attractive place for people to come. It means that with respect to federal and state funding, when people are looking at, at giving money, they want to know that a community, a community is well-run and going to use that money responsibly. So, you know, I, I think there are both qualitative and quantitative factors that, that make the AAA important. Jim Taylor or John Asher, is, is there, you know, your, your former chairs of advisory, is, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'll, I'll drop. I, I'll, I'll start here. You know, it's one of those, those issues, I think, that, that Hingham takes very, its bond rating very seriously for a lot of the reasons that, that Mary discussed. It provided us with access to the bond market when, when other communities didn't have that access. It provides us with highly desirable bonds. For instance, when we went out for the water company, we had, we were oversubscribed over five times for those bonds. That doesn't happen with a, with a AA community. What that ultimately did was push down our interest rate significantly. And that's not always, it's not always reflected in the spread tables if you look out there today. And then, and then lastly, as Mary indicated, it's not only a, it's not only relative to the interest rate, it's also makes us a more attractive environment and a community for a lot of different commercial businesses. So there's a lot of, it's a lot of really strong reasons to continue to stay AAA. And by the way, it's not easy to get. And if you lose it, it's not easy to get it back. So, a lot of reasons.
I'll, I'll add one other aspect to that, and that is, I think it also is a signal to folks that want to come to Hingham, not just to live, but potentially to work as employees, because there's a, there's an implication that the town is well enough managed that it's actually going to honor its pension and OPEB obligations and actually fund them so that there's money there to pay folks when they actually retire, as opposed to basically pulling out your pockets and going, well, we said one thing, but we can't do it because we don't have the money.
Yeah. And I would just add, you know, one other thing to, to sort of finish responding to this question. Having gone through the, the ratings for the water company just, just this past year, you know, what do the rating agencies like to see? Rating agencies actually, an override or a debt exclusion that is successful is something that is attractive to the rating agencies because it shows community support and willingness to invest in the community. Conversely, the rating agencies don't like to see overrides and debt exclusions that fail. The rating agencies don't like to see communities adopting practices to, adopting financial practices that are out of line with what, how they've done things in the past. So if we were all of a sudden going to, for example, start using debt to fund our, our, our long-term liabilities, that's a little bit of a signal that, you know, something's awry. So I, I guess the other thing that I would just offer, and I, I appreciate this and, and all these other questions, is that I think we've been a community over, over the, the last many, many years that has been able to do a lot of things at once. We've been able to invest in our infrastructure, invest in services, and maintain that bond rating. I, I think what, what we are trying to do as a board is to try to figure out how to, how to continue to do all those things in, in, in the tradition of many of our predecessors. I, I would, I would like to think that this doesn't have to be a forced choice, which, which is why we're having a lot of this community discussion. Mr., Mr. Bolu, I'm sorry, your whole name isn't coming up on my screen. And I, I butchered your name. I'm really, I'm really sorry, Dave. If, if you could introduce yourself and give your address, welcome.
Yeah, yeah, please, please call me, call me Dave. Dave Bollier, 18 Mast Hill. And I, I, I had a clarification, I guess, or a statement, maybe more than, more than a question. When, when we were talking about property taxes a moment ago, I think what I heard is that relative to peer towns, property tax rate is below average. But because of assessed values are higher than average, we essentially fall into an average range in terms of the tax bills. Is that correct?
So, so the, I'm going to actually suggest, Dave, that there's an inside town finances that speaks to property taxes that I'm going to, I'm going to encourage you to go on our website and look at because I think it'll explain it. But the short answer is that if, if you're in a community- But the short answer is that if, if you're in a community, and again, think about Hingham, under Massachusetts general law, our property tax rates can only go up by about two and a half percent a year. If you live in a community where the assessed value of the parcels in the town are going up by more than two and a half percent, your tax rate goes down. So for example, if you look in Hingham, you could look at our tax rate history and see from one year to the next, our tax rate goes down. It's not because we're collecting fewer taxes. It's because the relative growth in the assessed values is outpacing the growth in the, in, in, in the levy, in the two and a half percent. So when you're comparing tax rates, like if you're comparing Hingham's tax rate to Rockland's tax rate, a factor you have to take into account is that community's relative growth in assessed values relative to the growth in the two and a half percent. So as, as we're looking at, as we're looking at, at revenue and tax rates, it's, it's a little bit more nuanced than just looking at a tax rate and saying ours is lower. What, what I can tell you in general is ours is lower than average. Our average tax bill in dollars is about in the middle of the benchmark communities. So, um, the, the average Hingham tax bill, according to DOR, is like ninety-eight hundred dollars. We're kind of in the middle. If, if that, if that answers your question. Uh, sir, I think you're muted.
Sorry, am I back now? Yeah. So, so it does, and, and that makes sense. And, and again, I, I'd say I find myself in the odd position. I've never really advocated for higher taxes. However, if we have seen property values rise, if we frankly seen incomes in the town arise, I, I, at least amongst my peer groups, I find, um, we are demanding more services. Um, and we've continued to demand more services. And so I think it's a very reasonable perspective for the town to demand more of us from a, from a, from a tax rate perspective. And, you know, I, I think, like I said, it's reasonable to say as, as, as the community changes and the demands rise, so do, so should the tax rates.
Well, thank you. And, you know, part of, a, a big part of what we're doing over the next several weeks is as, as we're making recommendations to town meeting and, and you and your fellow citizens, you get to go to town meeting and, you know, you, you get to make all these decisions. It, it's our goal to try to hear from as many citizens as possible because at, at the end of the day, our, our, our job is to represent you. Our job is to put forward what you're looking, you know, what, what you're asking us to do. I will say that in, um, uh, I, I do think it is a little unusual to have people saying, you know, raise, raise my taxes. But again, we appreciate the engagement. And I think what we want to make sure of as, as we're moving forward is that what we're doing, we're doing in a responsible way. And, you know, you know, that, that kind of balances the desire for services, the, the desire for capital and is also mindful that, um, within a community, we have people that are in different economic circumstances. We have people who have called Hingham home for generations. We have a lot of working families who have been here for a very long time. And, you know, if, if you've been on any of our meetings where we talk about, you know, affordable housing, one, one of the challenges we have in Hingham is, um, we have a lot of people who, you know, they may, they may have a lot of equity built up in their house. The property values have risen. They want to stay in Hingham, but sort of where do, where do you go? And, um, and so we, we appreciate conversations where we can hear from people. We appreciate the thoughtful questions about our financial policy and things. You know, we, we need to sort of challenge each other in all this because Hingham works best when we have conversations like this and we, we all learn and we listen and we kind of figure the best, the best path forward for the town. So thank you for the questions and the comments. Uh, anyone else? Okay, um, we're going to move on to, um, our next subject. I will just tell people that, um, we would probably expect that over the next few weeks, you will see the, the budget as an agenda item. It is our goal to complete the war by the end of March, which is, which is what's required in order for us to hold a town meeting in early May. And so, um, you know, you will continue to see this on our agenda, on the Advisory Committee agenda. All of our emails are also listed, uh, on the town website. I see one more hand. I see Maura. Maura, your last name is, um, it's not coming up on the screen, but, um, if, if you have a last question or comment before we move to our next agenda item, welcome.
Hi, Mara Gallagher, twelve Hershey Street. I just had a question. We tax our residential property and our commercial property at the same rate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Has there been thought to, um, you know, raising the rates on commercial property as opposed to the residence so that, you know, businesses, especially we have like Amazon coming into town, that kind of thing, that they're paying, um, you know, a higher rate so it doesn't fall so much on the residents?
Sure. Thank you, Maura, for the question. And, um, um, so John and Jim, you're going to have to like nod your head or shake your head if I, if I get this, uh, get this, get this right or wrong. So Maura, the, um, the answer to your question is that once a year, we actually have to, as part of the tax setting process, the Board of Selectmen holds a public hearing with, um, with input from the Board of Assessors on whether to keep one tax rate or have a split tax rate. So a split tax rate is when there's a tax rate for commercial and a tax rate for residential. And we hold a public tax hearing every year. It's usually in the fall. Because, um, so the situation is that right now, eighty-nine percent of our tax levy comes from residential, from residential and eleven percent is from commercial. Again, when we think about a tax rate, what we're doing is we're splitting the revenue pie. The pie can only grow by two and a half percent. But the tax rate is kind of how we apportion it between, how, how we apportion it. Every year, the Assessor's Office does an analysis that shows what, what would happen if we, for example, were to increase the commercial tax rate to potentially alleviate some of the tax burden from residential, as you're suggesting. The situation is that in order for us to make a meaningful reduction in our residential tax rate, we would have to increase the commercial rate by something like thirty or forty percent. Because, because if, if we want to make a dent in eighty-nine percent of the pie, we're going to have to shift a whole lot over to the other. And our concern is that if we look at what, what type of a rate that would result in for the commercial properties, we, and, and we compare that to the commercial rates in neighboring communities, we think that Hingham would not be desirable. We've also found that as we've had our tax classification hearings year after year, we have many commercial businesses, including a lot of our merchants in the square, who come down and say, listen, if you guys shift this rate and, and my commercial rates go up by twenty, thirty percent, I'm not going to be able to stay here. So our, so, uh, so to answer your question, there is an annual hearing. If you're interested, I'd be happy to forward you a copy of the documents that were presented to the board for its consideration this past year, um, which, which probably gives a better explanation than I just did. So thank you for the question.
Mary?
Okay, yes.
If I can just add to that. I mean, you, you mentioned the smaller businesses. We're talking about restaurants, um, who, who are struggling right now. And have, you know, we had a deal with, with, with the alcohol tax issue there. So we're talking about really hitting some, some small businesses while they're down if we were to, to be looking at any sort of increase for commercial property right now.
Mary, one last point too, if you don't mind.
Please.
Just also remember that a lot of the potential growth for, uh, in Hingham is, that remains is not in the residential districts. It's in the commercial district. So if we're going to grow those districts, um, accordingly and be able to pay for our, our future growth, it's going to come from those commercial districts. And they got to be, they have to be, um, attractive.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. And, you know, again, thank you to everyone for, for the questions, the comments. We, we're, we're sort of all in this together. And, and we need to continue to challenge and kind of push our assumptions and revisit questions because, um, uh, you know, that, that's, that's kind of the tradition of how, how we've been successful in the past. Next item of business on the agenda is the Town Administrators FY22 Budget Recommendations. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom and Michelle.
Great. Thank you very much, Mary. I'll give Michelle a sec to catch up. There we go. Great. Thank you, Michelle. So I told, so we're going to split this presentation, um, as we go through. Michelle and I will be trading off slides as we go. But I will, uh, kick it off with an explanation of my overall, um, budget recommendations. This is all on top of the, um, the level service budget. So these are the additional requests that'll be put into our, um, our total budget recommendations that we'll summarize at the end. And just to, so everyone on the line understands, uh, I am responsible for putting forward the non-school budget recommendations, just to clarify, make sure everyone understands that. Dr. Austin puts forward the school recommendations. So these are, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Michelle, if you want to just jump back just for, for a second. So just, and so everyone understands what we're looking at here. This is a prioritized list of my total, of my total, uh, list of budget recommendations. Just so everyone also further understands that, that number that we were looking at earlier regarding the forecast, the, the budgeted, um, the total budget amount in the forecast document, these recommendations are baked into that number. So what you're hearing here tonight is representative of, uh, what's already in the overall forecast, um, forecast document right now. And so these are, this is a priority list of my additional recommendations. I just want to point out two quick facts. One is, uh, if an additional request from the original department request, original departmental budget request is not included above, then it is not being recommended by myself for FY22. And also, I just wanted to point out, and we'll, we'll get to this later in the presentation. But while it's not on this list, because it's a separate, uh, a separate portion of the budget, there, I, I am recommending a half million dollar increase in capital outlay. Michelle? So the number one, uh, budget recommendation that I'm, uh, recommending for FY22 is a, the creation of a new position to work out of my office. And that would be an Assistant Town Administrator for Finance. I'll, you'll, I'll show you some org charts here in a second that will help, uh, explain the, the concept. But what I hear on a regular basis from staff, department heads, um, across town is, uh, a difficulty in both understanding, um, how to get assistance from our office and availability of, uh, myself and Michelle to provide that assistance. And, um, while we always ultimately are, uh, made, make ourselves available, it's, it's a stretch right now with the size of our organization. So I just think we need to, um, we need to add some bandwidth to that office, uh, space to help us, um, with things like, you know, communication and efficiency, et cetera, with, um, with regards to support for the different departments. So the idea here is that we're adding an additional Assistant Town Administrator. This would be the additional, uh, the Assistant, the ATA for Finance. We have, in essence, um, existing right now, the position that Michelle currently holds, that we are thinking of as would be the ATA for Operations. So the total anticipated request for FY22, additional request for this item is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, Michelle, you want to jump forward? So this is the current structure. If it's, uh, scary to you, I assure you it, it is to us in real life as well. There are currently twenty-three departments that report, uh, directly to me. Michelle and I, uh, stand at the, at the top of this, uh, organization and do our best to field the issues that come before us from all of the different sectors of the community's government. That is no easy task. What I'll point out, what is not identified in either of these structures, just because it was too onerous to, to show it visually, our management of the, I was getting an echo there, is management of the existing boards and committees and our some four hundred or so, uh, volunteers every year. So that's, that's also in here. But this structure is intended to give our department heads some understanding of how they can best get the support they need. So leaving this terrifying, uh, structure to our new proposed structure on the next slide, there we go. This, I think, streamlines the process. It streamlines it both for Michelle and myself and our new ATA, uh, should this be approved, but also really for our department heads. And that's, that's, that's the ultimate benefit here is this structure gives them a, a, a clear reporting, um, uh, structure and, and avenue and capacity for getting the help that they need, uh, on a day-to-day basis. So here, the concept is the ATA of Operations would take on all of our, um, all of our regulatory boards and, and subsequent staffing, uh, excuse me, subsequent, uh, support departments as well as our public-facing, uh, departments such as elder services, library, recreation, you know, the country club, veterans, et cetera. However, the, the, while the new position that's being proposed, which is the ATA of Finance, would, uh, would take on support for the three financial, um, departments in addition to some of the non, uh, non-public facing departments such as, uh, our office, the clerks, office facilities, um, human resources and IT. I will point out that you'll see on the right here, the, the larger departments, uh, will continue to report directly to me. That is the DPW Director, uh, the Two Chiefs, and of course, our new, um, Position of Water Superintendent. So, uh, this is the proposed structure. This is what we would be able to put in place if we had this second, uh, Assistant Town Administrator. Michelle?
So the second budget recommendation that we're moving forward for FY22 is a full-time mental health clinician in the Police Department. This is something that we're hearing the need for directly from the community as well as from our Police Department. Chief Jones and his team have been advocating for this position at the full-time level to support our officers. When I took the Citizens Police Academy now two years ago and we asked all the different officers through that program, what's the biggest issue that you see facing the community? The answer was mental health, mental health, mental health. So this is a way, um, to, to give the support to our Police Department to be able to address these needs in the community more effectively. The FY22 request here for one full-time person is about fifty-four thousand dollars. And I know Chief Jones is on the line in case there's any questions about this request.
Great. The Planning Department, Community Planning. So I, so we presented, when our Community Planning Director, a longtime Community Planning Director, Mary Savage Dunham, resigned back at the end of December, I presented her budget at the time with what was proposed as an Assistant Town Planner. That has since been rethought and, um, and we are proposing a restructuring of that department in large part for the same dollars that I had proposed the Assistant Town Planner ad at the time, a couple of thousand dollars lower, actually. So the concept here is that we would hire a new senior planner, which would put within that department, uh, uh, the sum total of a Community Planning Director, a, one senior planner and one administrative assistant for a total of three personnel. The senior planner would, would be the person that would be responsible for, um, for staffing the planning board. And I, I know Bill understands how, how much work that is And I know Bill understands how much work that is, having been on that board for so long and in the chair. But there's a lot of a lot of work and a lot of skill needed to staff a planning board on a full-time basis. So we're proposing that the senior planner would would in large part play that role. And we have rethought and re restructured the community planning director role to be more of the of the long-term planning, to help us with planning the long-term planning initiatives. And and that includes things like what we've identified here of, you know, the master plan, South Hingham Development, et cetera, some of the downtown and harbor visioning efforts that we've been involved in, the climate action resiliency efforts, and some of the other proposals that have been before the before the town in recent years. And I think that this model is an affordable model and one that will really expand and and appropriately size our planning department for years to come.
The next recommendation for FY twenty-two is one heavy equipment operator at our transfer station. Two were requested, and we're recommending one of these for the following year. In speaking with our DPW superintendent, Randy Sylvester, he explained that the growth of the community in the last several years and construction activity has led to increased activity at the transfer station. There's a lot of different functions and services that are provided at the transfer station, and the staffing structure has not changed along with the growth that the community's experienced. So the department is not able to keep up with the the regular work during regular hours there, and we end up doing it on overtime, which is not the best way to to budget and do that work. So one heavy equipment operator would be able to assist with the scale operations and the trucking operations in particular at the transfer station, and that request is about $52,000 for FY twenty-two. The next one is the field maintenance program, and Mark Thorell, our recreation director, presented this to the board a couple weeks ago. We had completed a a comprehensive athletic fields and outdoor court study with assistance from Weston and Sampson last year, and that was undertaken through a field study working group that Mark led with representatives from the school, from our office, the Country Club, DPW, the Hingham Sports Partnership, and others. And that the main recommendation or the first recommendation coming out of that study was that we centralize our field maintenance program and provide more resources to it so that we're taking better care of the facilities that we already have. So this additional request for FY twenty-two would support all of the fields and outdoor courts that are owned by the school, the rec department, and the Board of Selectmen. Mark has put together the the total request of $241,180 is net of revenue offsets from revenue offsets from those different departments. And and by doing this, by investing in our fields and our courts this way, it really lays the groundwork for future future capital investments that we may want to undertake. Because if we're not taking proper care of what we own, our investments in the future won't be protected as well. So we we would like to move forward with this step, and we would centralize this program under the rec department.
So the communications consultant, the this is a little bit of a repackaging of a presentation I had made last year and consistent, by the way, with what was presented to you as part of our budget review in the Selectmen's office. But the the concept I proposed last year was a full-time position of of a PIO, Public Information Officer, that was going to be able to, as from a staff perspective, be able to provide communications help with the public for the town. However, in after thinking about it a little bit further, I think we might be able to dip our toe in those waters a bit more successfully and carefully by starting out by contracting this 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 role out rather than hiring a full-time employee that, you know, comes with costs of benefits, et cetera, and is often, you know, a much more permanent approach to to staffing a problem or staffing an issue. So the concept here is to hire a communications consultant from the outside, a firm preferably that would be able to provide multiple skill sets. And and you can see that what we would anticipate that that group being able to help us with. And I'll I'll add extra emphasis to the to the second to last bullet on there, which is to promote positive engagement with local government. I think I think it's important that the that the community get a better sense of what's happening every day within their government. I'm not sure that that's clear a lot of times, and it's in large part because of the of our inability and and lack of bandwidth to to be able to properly promote it. So I think that that's an important piece. The total FY twenty-two request for this item was $35,000.
The next two budget recommendations, number seven and eight, are both to address structural deficits in our budget. And this is in response to requests from the current and former Board of Selectmen for us to figure out how to how to address these structural deficits going forward. So here, starting with legal services, you can see that the blue bars represent our actual spending over the last 10 years, and the green bars represent our budget, which has not, which has fallen well below our actual expenses for that period. What we are recommending, so we looked at the five-year average cost in legal services. We're recommending funding it at 80% of that level, which would require about $188,000 in FY twenty-two to get to that level. We have put some measures in place to try to control these costs as much as possible by instituting things like office hours with some of our councils so that departments can try to proactively address some issues that they may see brewing. But some things continue to be outside the town's control, such as litigation and other situations that come up that that we're not able to anticipate. But this is our request to to fund this at a more appropriate level going forward, if possible. And then similarly, recommendation number eight about the snow and ice budget in DPW is the same thing. This is 100% outside of our control and often requires that we dip into fund balance at the end of the year to fund these deficits. Again, here you can see the blue is the actual what we spent. If you remember, Snowmageddon in 2015, that was almost $2 million of expenditures. And other years, like at 2012, maybe it was 200,000. There's huge variation here. The green is again what we've budgeted in the past, and the recommendation is the same as legal services. We would like to bring it up to 80% of the five-year average cost. And so for snow and ice, that would take us about $63,000. Those were the eight recommendations before we moved to capital. We just wanted to look at the overall picture of the municipal budget and the changes. So the FY twenty-two level services budget, you can see a snapshot here of the different categories. Overall, before we add those requests on, it's about a 3.1% increase, and that's being driven largely by an increase in our trash contract at the transfer station, an increase in public safety utilities. And there's a couple other items in there. In Articles four and five here, you see what looks like a crazy increase of 381%. But that's actually the cost of living adjustment for all of our employees in years when the when the contracts aren't settled. It it'll show up in Article four instead of directly in the department budget. That's why you can see like the public safety increases is not going to be 0.8%. So there's a little bit of shifting in there. Article four and five also represents some money for our wage and classification study that was just approved by the Personnel Board. And that was a study that we haven't done in 20 years, and it's recommending an amount, an equity adjustment to bring our non-union, non-contract, permanent employees up to the the 51st percentile of our benchmark communities. So we have we have fallen behind there, and we're just doing an adjustment to bring people up to the marketplace. So right now, we're looking at that 3.1%. If we add the eight recommendations that Tom and I just presented, that brings the municipal budget request up to 6% for FY twenty-two. And then if we move on to capital. So the capital budget, as Tom mentioned early on, we are recommending an additional $500,000 for the FY twenty-two capital outlay budget. As we mentioned earlier this evening, or someone mentioned, the students from the Harvard Kennedy School did a study of our capital outlay process and kind of benchmarked us to our 19 comp towns to see how we're doing. And one of the things that they found is that only about half of our department requests are able to be funded through this process. And you heard, we heard from Chair Eric Ballantyne earlier this evening that that's that's tough for the capital outlay and for the departments, and it results in a lot of deferrals. I've screenshotted here a little bit of DPW's vehicle deferral list, which is something that keeps Tom and I up at night because all of those Ds that we see circled there represent vehicles that are beyond their expected useful life or their the useful life that we should be working towards on the replacement schedule. You can see here that these are all between eight, 10, or 15 years, and the Ds represent every year after that point that we have not been able to replace those vehicles. Eric also talked a little bit about the backlog and the millions of dollars that that's created for the capital budget. So we are we are trying to start to address this by adding a significant chunk of money there. The study also recommended that we find new ways to raise revenue for the capital budget. So our recommendation for this year, according to our financial policy, the capital outlay outlay plan should be about 2% to 5% of the town's operating budget. And so our level services request of 2.6 million, it does incorporate the $100,000 that we've been adding to capital each year. But as Eric said, that only moves the needle so far. That represents about 2.8% of the town's operating budget. If we add the 500,000, it gets us up to 3.3%, so getting a little bit closer to the middle range, the middle of that range. And of course, the $500,000 would support both municipal and school capital projects. So same thing as before, when we showed the municipal budget increases, looking at the shared services in our overall budget without the increase that we just talked about in capital, it's actually going down a little bit. That's driven by debt service and debt that retires off of our schedule every year. But as we go out for new projects, there'll be new debt service added to our debt service schedule. The the increase you see here in unclassified, the 34%, that's driven largely by our property and liability insurance that had a huge increase. You can see in FY twenty-two because of some large claims that were submitted in the last few years. If we add the 500,000 of capital that drives the capital increase up to 24%, but you can see overall the shared services budget is only increasing by 0.2%. And then we are going to end right where we started, just recapping the really the nine requests that we're putting forward. Tom?
Great. Thank you very much, Michelle. Excellent summary. Yeah, this is just a recap of what we had just shown you. Again, these are the eight, the eight new additional recommendations we're making, and they are in priority order.
Thank you. Tom and Michelle, thank you so much for for, excuse me, for an excellent presentation. I would just, before opening it up to Joe and Bill, I I just remind people what Tom said, which is our four and a half million dollar deficit includes all these items. So those are not on top of of what we're doing. And I would just add that item number one, I would just remind the public that several years ago, we had a director of finance that was separate from the town administrator. And during the sort of economic downturn of 2008, 2009, for cost savings purposes, the town sort of folded the director of finance role into the town administrator role. That was not something that we really, we we did that out of necessity. So in some ways, I look at this job, while it has a slightly different title, I look at it as re-establishing a position that has been in place for the town. So Joe, questions for Tom or Michelle about the presentation?
Joe? There we go. I just got off you. Thank you. So you missed all my great questions. No, thank you, Tom and Michelle, for a thorough presentation. The issues, the the eight points that you got on screen are all important. I don't know if Chief Jones wants to talk about the mental health clinician. From my my conversations with the police, I think that's critical. I want to focus on the senior planner. We've been talking about the need in this town to grow revenue, and this is where it's going to happen. We need the senior planner to be working with us so that we can grow revenue, and the rest of the town will benefit. The field maintenance program, I note that in that is not, even though it's on the town side, that is the schools as well as the towns, which is what was recommended. And with respect to the communications consultant, one point that was not mentioned is that we took advantage of that. And it was because of this that we helped, we were able to help stave off the MBTA's plans to eliminate ferry service from Hingham and to significantly curtail the Green Bush Line. So this, the ability to have a communications consultant and to work with them and get the word out, not just within Hingham, but to the state, is absolutely critical. Tom, Tom was really supportive in this. And so we need these things, and the entire town benefits. So I've got no questions, just a a very strong endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Bill?
A couple of points and then a couple of questions. Tom, I I think the way that you want to restructure your office is is going to benefit the entire town. I like the structure. I like the fact you're going to have a reporting structure in place for the different departments. I think it's going to help with communications altogether, and I'm very supportive of that. The senior planner position, Tom, so that that individual would staff the planning board and assist with those big-picture items that Joe was referring to?
The idea was a senior planner, so the the additional request here is for the senior planner. The senior planner would staff the planning board, thereby freeing up the director of community planning, which is a position we already have, although a a kind of restructured for that position. But that position would then be freed up to really engage in what Joe was just talking about, the the future of the town's growth in in all of our long-term planning initiatives.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is for the chief. I think he's still on the line. You know, chief, I I think I asked you about this position during your interview. So thrilled to see it being forwarded as a as an as an item here. Just kind of curious, I don't want to take too much time, but could you just talk about for the public how the clinician would fit into your mission? I'm assuming he or she would be used in situations where you have to deal with issues with domestic violence or substance use. But if you could just briefly describe in a little more detail how this position would help your your officers, that would be great.
Sure, Bill, thanks. So we have currently, we have a a part-time, eight-hour-a-week clinician on a grant that we share with WAMAS. This person would obviously supplement that. And, you know, we we've come to rely on that individual quite heavily. Heavily, we see the the need to to make it a a full-time position. So basically, they they're able to to work with our current clinician that we have, the the part-time one, that'd be able to work with the advocates that we have that work at the courthouse, as well as the Plymouth County Outreach, police addicted recovery initiative folks, too. So this this person would be a go-between between the officers on the street and all those resources, as well as being able to provide resources to, like you mentioned, you know, a person that's in crisis, you know, at the scene of a call, also their family. You know, if they had roommates that are living in a situation like that, they can provide services to those people as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, anything else?
No, I'm good, Mary. Thank you.
Okay. Members of the public, questions or comments on the FY twenty-two budget recommendations from the town administrator? Okay, Tom and Michelle, thank you. This this will be very helpful in as we as we move forward and and the budget continues to evolve. And I would recommend that that this document be shared with our advisory committee colleagues because I think it may be helpful for them as well in in their deliberations. Next item of business on the agenda is inside-town finances. And you'd almost think that we planned this, Tom and Michelle. But but this week, we're just going to take a a little bit of a look at municipal expenses. Michelle, if you could pull up the the PowerPoint, so.
Just trying to open it. Sorry, Mary.
No problem. People may remember that, you know, from last week, that that municipal expenses represent about 25% of the town's operating expenses. So Michelle showed a few minutes ago, we have shared expenses, we have municipal expenses, and then we have education. And the municipal, the municipal piece of the pie is about 25%. And those those municipal expenses are actually broken up into into five different categories. So briefly, the first category is general government. Michelle, if you want to go to the general government slide? Thank you. So general government is about 17%. If you could go to the next slide, so general government's about 17% of our budget of the municipal. And all the departments listed on the left-hand side are all the different And all the departments listed on the left-hand side are all the different departments that do all this work. And all in all, we have 34 full-time and 14 part-time people who do all this work. And I would point out that for many of you, if you ever go into the assessor's office or the town clerk's office, you'll find that each of these departments are typically staffed by maybe two or three people. In some cases, you have one person. And so there is a lot of specialized work here that includes a lot of the permitting and the licensing activities that we're required to provide, some of the land use departments that we've spoken about, as well as support staff, things like IT, accounting, treasure collector's office, they, they send out our property tax bills, they collect, they collect money. If you go to the next slide, Michelle, public safety is about 54% of the municipal budget. It's seven departments listed on the left-hand side. Public safety, these are 24-hour-a-day, seven days a week, 365-day-a-year departments. Our fire and emergency management department responded to 4,600 calls in 2019. And the way that they are organized is into four operational groups of 13 firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. So with, within it, within an operational group, the vast majority of our firefighters are EMTs. We also have paramedics. But at any one point in time, within the town of Hingham, you have anywhere between 11 and 13 people on duty for the whole town at any one point in time. Our police department in 2019, they responded to over 29,000 calls for service. We have 53 full-time officers. They are broken out into four different shifts. Again, it's 24/7, 365. And 53 of our full-time officers include five school resource officers. And I think an important thing to note with public safety is that in, in fiscal year 2020, the preceding year, between the building department, the fire, the fire department, and the harbor master, $3 million in revenue that was, is collected. And that goes into our local receipts, that's some of that revenue that we saw earlier tonight. That offsets 22% of the total public safety budget. And that is an important revenue stream for the town that supports, that supports activities that go, go beyond public safety. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide, Public Works, it's about 18% of the total. And Public Works, again, there are six departments. The Sewer Department is funded through user rates, that's like an enterprise fund. Public Works, we have 51 full-time and two part-time people who are responsible for 100 mi, 140 miles of roads, 60 miles of sidewalks, over 10,000 public shade trees, and the transfer station gets about 7,000 weekly vehicle trips. You know, sometimes we get questions from people about, you know, I'd like a sidewalk here, I'd like you to put in a sidewalk there. Can you, can you pave my road? One of the challenges that we have, you know, one of the challenges of our municipal budget is both with people and funding to, we have to take care of, of the paved surfaces that we have. And, you know, that's a consideration as, as we look at, you know, adding sidewalks and other things. If you could go to the next slide, please, Michelle. The next department is Human Services. This is 8% of our budget. Elder Services, so our Elder Services Department, it's three full-time and four part-time people. Our Health Department is three full-time and three part-time people. Health Imperatives and South Shore Women's Center, those are contributions Hingham makes to these organizations. They liaise with our Police Department and our Health Department to help women and victims of domestic violence. And our Veterans Services Department has one full-time and one part-time personnel. An interesting thing is that Human Services relies a lot on volunteer hours. As a matter of fact, in 2019, our Senior Center Volunteer Hours, 8,732 volunteer hours. If we had to hire people, we'd have to hire five full-time people. And what's really interesting, and Joe, Bill, and I get to go to the senior volunteer appreciation luncheon, most of the volunteers are seniors. It's just, it's a wonderful community. And if you look at our veterans, we have, in 2019, we had 531 Veteran Service Volunteer Hours. Many of the, many of them performed by John Asher, who you saw earlier tonight. And then if you go to the last slide, the last department is Culture and Recreation, and it's 3% of the municipal budget, and the bulk of it is the library. The library is 89% of the total. We also, the municipal budget funds Recreation Commission, the Trustees of the Bathing Beach, Historic Preservation, Celebrations, which is Memorial Day, Veterans Day. And Culture and Recreation includes the South Shore Country Club. But again, that's funded through user rates, so there's no taxpayer impact. In the year preceding the Hingham, in the year preceding the pandemic, there were 252,000 visits to the, to the Hingham Library. It's a pretty happening place, and despite the fact that it's not open on Friday. I mean, you know, you, you talk about a budget wish list, wouldn't it be great if the library was open on Friday? And the library is staffed by 12 full-time personnel and 23 part-time personnel. So, you know, in summary, the municipal budget, it's about 25% of the whole town budget. Like all of our departments, it's very people-intensive. We have people who, you know, we have part-time and full-time people. It is heavily supported by volunteers. A lot of the things that we have to do, we're required to do by statute or by Massachusetts law, services that we have to provide the community. And, and we also understand that all these activities are taxpayer-funded, and we try to be, we try to be good stewards of, of the money that the Hingham taxpayers trust us to spend on, on their behalf to support these services. So that's just a quick look at, at municipal. Joe or Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions, Mary.
Okay. Next item of business, Tom, is the COVID-19 update.
Great, thank you very much, Mary. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So the COVID-19 update for today, according to the public health data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health released last week, the town's designation remains yellow, indicating a medium risk of spread in the community. There have been 82 new cases of COVID-19 in Hingham over the past 14 days, and a total of 1,566 cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. The average daily incidence rate for the town of Hingham was 24.4 per 100,000 residents, and our percent positivity rate was 2.18 for the previous 14 days. As of today, confirmed COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts totaled 551,667. Public health metrics have been trending in a positive direction statewide, including drops in average daily COVID-19 cases and hospitalization rates. Regarding the vaccine rollout, according to the DPH's Daily COVID-19 Vaccine Report, a total of 1.25 million first doses in over 565,000 second doses have been administered in Massachusetts as of today. 88% of the total doses shipped to our state have been reported as administered. At this time, all Phase 1 priority groups, as well as the Phase 2 priority, the first, as well as the first two priority groups in Phase 2, are eligible to receive the vaccine in Massachusetts. Eligible Phase 2 individuals include people that are age 65 and over, individuals with two or more certain medical conditions, and residents and staff of low income and affordable senior housing. The state's Vaccine Finder website, vaxfinder.mass.gov, allows residents to search for vaccine sites and schedule appointments. Residents can also call the state at 211 for assistance with vaccine information and appointments. Regarding the state reopening plans, so last week, the governor, last week, the governor announced that Massachusetts would advance to Phase 3, Step 2 of the state's reopening plan as of yesterday. He also announced that the state would transition to Phase 4, Step 1, on Monday, March 22, provided public health metrics continue to improve. Beginning yesterday, the following changes, among others, went into effect. There will be no capacity limits at restaurants, but six feet of distancing, six feet, six people per table maximum, and a 90-minute maximum dining length per party will still be followed. There will be a 50% capacity limit at fitness centers, close-contact personal services, places of worship, office spaces, museums, cultural and historic facilities, and some other venues. And fitting rooms can reopen in all retail locations. Beginning on March 22, gathering limits for event venues and public settings are set to increase to 100 people indoors and 150 people outdoors. Outdoor gatherings at private residences and in private backyards will remain at a maximum of 25 people, and indoor house gatherings remain at 10 people. In addition, dance floors will be permitted at weddings and other events, overnight summer camps will be allowed to operate this coming summer, and exhibition and convention halls may also begin to operate, following gathering limits and event protocols. More details about when and how different sectors and venues will reopen can be found on the state website at mass.gov. The state is continuing to closely monitor public health data, and we are assessing our plans to reopen public buildings. We are, excuse me, the town is, we are working on plans to gradually reopen municipal facilities, including town hall and town offices, the Hingham Public Library, expanded recreation programs, and the Senior Center. Our top priority remains the health and safety of our residents, town employees, and business owners, and we will continue to keep the public informed of our plans as they progress. A lot of good news has been reported here tonight, and we are encouraged by the drop in cases, lower hospitalization rates, and the governor's reopening plans. While we are looking forward to getting back to a more normal life, as our CDC Director, Rochelle Walensky, reported last night, we have to proceed with caution so that we don't erase the progress we've made. We still need to continue with COVID-19 protocols, such as wearing masks, maintaining social distancing, washing hands frequently, and staying home if we feel ill. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom?
Tom, I do have one question. Do you know if there are any plans to set aside vaccine doses for teachers?
I do not know that yet, Joe. I've heard some discussion among town managers in the region that perhaps they would be advocating that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines, as they're released, be, be identified for that purpose, among other purposes. It's a one-shot vaccine, easier to store, et cetera. So there's some discussion like that at the local level. I don't know if the state is considering that or not.
Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
No questions. Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Any members of the public have any questions regarding the COVID-19 update? Okay, seen none. Public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, selectmen town administrator reports. Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Just one quick comment. So Michelle and I have been going to the shift changes at the police station and the police department for, for the last week or so, just to reinforce with, you know, our, our belief and faith in our new police chief and, and that, you know, he's going to be the leader that that department needs going forward. I just wanted to report out what you already all know. We have an amazing police department. Those folks are so squared away, they're so dedicated. You know, being in front of them all in, in, in recent days just drives home how much dedication they bring to that job. They're, they're in there every day and have been throughout an entire pandemic without question. And, and it just, it's just, it's moving when you stand in front of them and, and speak to them like this, like I have been for the last few weeks, so.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you both for, for taking the time to do that.
We nominated Joe to go to the midnight shift.
Thanks.
Joe, any, anything to report?
I'll report on the midnight shift at another time.
Bill?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. The only thing I will add is, because this is warrant season, the board will be meeting this Thursday, March 4, at 7:00 PM. Slightly shorter agenda than this evening, but that will allow us to, you know, continue to hear warrant articles and, and help the Advisory Committee stay on track. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.